Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Milton Common Council Meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order on Tuesday, February 4th at 6:03 PM. And can I get confirmation of public meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Milton City Hall, Hometown Ace Hardware in Milton Piggly Wiggly.
Our next item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance and Council President... Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So vote.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have an agenda, Pledge of Allegiance. I want to welcome everyone to our City Council meeting this evening, and I am thrilled to see you all here. You have signed in and said if you wanted to speak this evening. So we have a list of folks that have signed up to speak. You have the option of doing your public comments now, and I'm happy to do that. You come out to the podium, first and last name and address, or you can wait until your agenda item. I'm perfectly good with either format. We are going to allow about three minutes per person, since there's so many people this evening. I know that doesn't seem like a lot, but if we did five or 10 minutes, you know, we would be here all night. So we want to hear from you. We just ask you to be concise and to the point, and we do appreciate your feedback. We honor and respect all of you for being here tonight with us and providing us feedback and for taking the time to do this. We don't always get a lot of people at our meetings, but we're super happy when we do. I think that's a sign of a really healthy community when the community is engaged and showing up and having their voices heard. So, welcome. So right now, if you would like to come up and do a public comment, we can start off doing that. And we can go in the order in which people are signed up. The first person is Pete Petroff. So if you want to go now, that's fine, otherwise you can wait till later. I guess, is there anyone that wants to go right now? Come on up. First and last name and address, thanks.
Karina Dutcher, 1222 Woodland Drive. The only, I guess, comment that I want to make is I looked into worst-case scenario if you did come through and put the sidewalks into our subdivision, replacement of the trees. I talked to McGuire Landscaping and for trees, two trees half, not even half the size, less than half the size of what we have now is going to... We're looking at about $12,000. We don't have that available. Like I said before, that's the only shade in my entire yard, and I don't even know, you know, as far as how far we could go back if the sidewalks do come in, but we're looking at $12,000 on our replacement and to just replace our two trees. That's out of the 50 some that you plan on taking down in the neighborhood. So it's a big cost, you know, that us as homeowners are going to take on to try to bring back the look of the neighborhood if this goes through. So I'm just trying to be proactive and trying to figure out where we stand if this ends up going through.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate that. And one just point of clarification. The council has not decided to put in sidewalks, so if we talk about going through with a plan, like that plan has not been voted on yet, just so you know. So there's multiple versions of what this can look like, but just so people are all on the same page. Is there anyone else that would like to speak now? Okay, otherwise, we will go on to proclamations. The first proclamation we have is for Black History Month. As all of you know, the City of Milton and the Goodrich family, our founders, have a rich history of living their values and being abolitionists. So we have a great history to celebrate in connection with Black History Month, and I'll go ahead and I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the month of February is observed nationally as Black History Month to share the accomplishments African-Americans have made and continue to offer to this nation. And whereas Black History Month acknowledges and honors numerous past and present educators, scientists, activists, pioneers, leaders, artists, inventors, entrepreneurs, and elders. And whereas the theme of Black History Month of 2025 is African-Americans and labor. And whereas the story of Milton since its foundation has included progressive abolitionist views and actions that led to the Milton House, a former stagecoach inn built in 1845 by Milton's founder, being named a national historic landmark, recognized on the National Network to Freedom and documented as the only authenticated Underground Railroad site in Wisconsin that people are able to tour. And whereas Andrew Pratt, a self-emancipated slave who came to Milton in the 1860s, never served in the Union Army during the Civil War, but attempted to enlist in 1863 by writing to Wisconsin's governor to approve an exemption to allow a colored man to enlist. And whereas A.B. Lee, born a free African-American man in 1833, who migrated north at the beginning of the Civil War and volunteered for Massachusetts 54th, the first African-American Union Army Combat Brigade, settled in Milton following the war. And whereas Milton remembers and recognizes the contributions that these two individuals and countless other African-Americans have made and are making to the unique fabric that is the community of Milton. And whereas the mayor and common council recognize the significance of Black History Month as an important time to acknowledge and celebrate the contributions of African-Americans in the City of Milton and around the United States. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, County of Rock, State of Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim February as Black History Month in the City of Milton and encourage the celebration of this month to provide an opportunity for all residents in the city to learn more about the past and better understand the experiences that shaped our community and nation. And our second proclamation is for Future Business Leaders of America Week, which is February 8th through February 15th of 2025. Whereas Future Business Leaders of America is a nonprofit educational organization whose first chapter was established in Johnson City, Tennessee in 1942. And whereas Iowa became Future Business Leaders of America's first state chapter in 1947. And whereas Milton High School officially chartered its FBLA local chapter on November 12th, 1974. And whereas FBLA includes more than 250,000 members and advisors in 4,600 chapters nationwide in middle schools, high schools, colleges, universities, career and technical schools, and private businesses. And whereas FBLA is a professional business organization dedicated to bringing business and education together in a positive working relationship through innovative leadership and career development programs. And whereas FBLA members perform community service activities and strive to build a student's understanding of the realities of the modern business world. And whereas FBLA teaches middle school, high school, and college students basic business and leadership principles and assists them in the transition from school to work. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim February 9th through the 15th as National FBL Week in the City of Milton and School District of Milton. And I will sign that today. So thank you for listening to those proclamations. Approval of the consent agenda, is there a motion?
Second?
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding the Northwest Street Improvements Project. And I'll let staff speak on it first, and then we'll just hear all of you that want to speak on this agenda item.
The Northwest Street Improvement Project is located on Forest Lake Drive between West Madison Avenue and the Northern Limits, Ivanhoe Drive between West Madison Avenue and the Northern Limits, Woodland Drive between Forest Lake Drive and Ivanhoe Drive, and Surrey Drive between Forest Lake Drive and Ivanhoe Drive. City staff hosted a public information open house on January 14th. Residents were notified of the open house with the attached letter. The meeting had a large turnout and involved discussion with residents and staff regarding the project. Many residents expressed their appreciation for the street pavement improvements. Most residents were not in support of the sidewalk installation for various reasons. Some provided comments that can be seen in the attached sign-in and public comments. Generally, there was concern about loss of trees, yard space, and project costs. The draft plans presented at that meeting indicated the removal of approximately 57 trees. As a follow-up to the meeting, an alternative to revise the street width was further reviewed by staff. This alternative adjusts the project scope from a pavement replacement with curb and gutter, spot repair, and new sidewalk to a pavement reconstruction with new sidewalk. The pavement reconstruction project removes all of the curb and gutter and creates a new roadway section that matches city ordinance for a local street. This reduces the width of the street from the existing back-of-curb to back-of-curb dimension of 40 feet to 33 feet. This allows for additional green space, driveway length, and space for sidewalk construction that reduces the impacts to the existing trees. This alternative removes approximately 30 trees. Another benefit of this alternative is lower long-term maintenance costs as a result of the reduced pavement area. Further plans have been developed showing both street alternatives and no sidewalks. The Public Works Committee met on January 27th to review the project alternatives. The meeting had a large public turnout. Similar concerns were expressed by the residents to the Public Works Committee that were shared at the Public Information Open House on January 14th. There was also discussion regarding the possibility of school bus service ending if sidewalks were installed. The Public Works Committee recommended the project be forwarded to the Common Council, noting overwhelming opposition of the neighborhood to having sidewalks, and requested a review of right-way busing services and tree replacement costs. Staff reached out to Go Right Way and the Milton School District regarding the busing service. Discussions with Stephanie Cullen of Go Right Way and Jennifer Kramer of the Milton School District provided that the area does currently receive bus service due to it being deemed a hazard due to the proximity of County Highway M and the lack of sidewalks or pedestrianways in the neighborhood. Those determinations are made through collaboration with the Milton School District, Go Right Way, and the Rock County Sheriff. In the event that walks are installed, there would be a review by the group to determine if bus service would continue. If bus service ended, there would be no option for bus service in the neighborhood. The buy-a-seat option would not exist because there's no planned stop in the neighborhood and because DPI provides that students who live less than two miles from the school are not automatically eligible for transportation. The total project cost is shown in the attached preliminary opinion of probable construction cost and is estimated to be $1,050,000 for the alternative that uses the existing street section and includes sidewalks. The narrowed-street alternative is approximately $1,180,000. And the attached opinions of cost, considered project costs without sidewalks on the existing alternative would be $585,000 or savings of approximately $465,000. The attached lifecycle cost comparison provides estimated costs for additional pavement maintenance that would be required for the wider street section. The analysis assumes the additional cost for two pavement rehabilitations over a 40-year window to be approximately $391,000 more than the narrowed-street section. Project funding will be through a borrowing that will be presented later this year. The city has also applied for and received two Local Road Improvement Fund grants in the amount of $37,462.09. If sidewalks were not included in the project or a change to the project scope occurs, further research would be needed to see if the project would remain grant-eligible. Alternatively, the grant may be able to be used for another project if a project substitution request is applied for and approved by WISDOT. Staff also reviewed tree planting costs and have determined the cost to be approximately $300 to $500 per tree. I would note that that's for small trees. I presume the trees that were discussed by the member of the public tonight were for a much larger tree. If approximately 60 trees are replaced, the cost to replace the trees would be between $18,000 to $30,000. And tree replacement would not be guaranteed to be the exact same tree species that was removed. Staff is seeking direction on the project.
And we don't have a lifetime cost of maintaining the sidewalks, right?
We do not have that.
Okay, so that would be additional.
Routine sidewalk budget costs, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, let's go. Pete? Oh, he's not... You're not for this one? Okay.
My name is Dawn Sal Brady, 104 Ivanhoe Drive. I have a quick question about... I have a question and then a comment. The question is if you... Our streets are wider now. What would be if you shortened up the streets? What would be the car flow? There's only two entrances in and out of our subdivision, and I live on one of the corners. Right now, we have four cars where my neighbor could park a car on the street. I could park a car on the street, and there still would be traffic game, and it'll go up and down. I'm under the assumption that if you shrink our road, it'll only be a two-car area, so only cars can go up and down. And if anyone was parked on the street, it would cause a traffic jam? Is that my understanding, or is that correct or wrong?
The proposed or the possible pavement width, and this would match with the city ordinances for a local street, would be 28 feet from edge of pavement to edge of pavement. So that... And that would be 31 feet to the edge of the... From face of curb to face of curb.
Car lengths-wise.
So your two car lanes plus parking, that would still be allowed, that would still be possible.
It still would be possible.
Correct. And there are other neighborhoods. That's the current standard that's used for all local streets that are built and new developments in Milton.
Okay. And then can I... Just a comment for you. I remember back when you had your addition put on your house, if I remember correctly, and you had to send letters to your neighbors, neighbors on Sunset and your neighbors on Ivanhoe Drive about an easement problem. Apparently, none of us came to the City Council to object, because you did get your addition to your home. In my personal view and my husband's view, it didn't matter what you did, because it was your home and your yard. And all I ask is, do you give us the common courtesy to enjoy our homes and our yards before you vote?
I'll take everything into consideration.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, good job. That was under three minutes. Two minutes, in fact. And it's not a contest. I just, you know, want to say thank you. Who's next?
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Gagne, and I'm at 342 Ivanhoe Drive. Prepare the statement. In regards to what I'm going to be talking about, since there's so many variables and variations, I'm specifically going to be talking tonight on tree removal and the narrowing of the streets.
Do you mind talking into the mic just a little bit? Thank you.
Sure. Sorry, I'm used to talking in front of people and usually have a pretty loud voice. I wanted to express my strong opposition to the proposal of possibly narrowing our streets and/or installing sidewalks in our neighborhood, which have thrived in the establishment since the 1980s without any such infrastructure. Our community has a remarkable safety record with no reported injuries or accidents involving motorists or pedestrians. This demonstrates that our current setup is effective and safe. There is no significant upside to narrowing our streets to accommodate sidewalks. On the contrary, it would detract from the aesthetic appeal of our neighborhood. We are fortunate to have over 64 beautiful trees, mature trees, and eight shrubs that contribute to the charm and the character of our area. Removing these trees and shrubs, per the proposed plan, and planting new ones would only disrupt the visual harmony, but also take years to restore the natural beauty we currently enjoy. The financial impact of this project is also concerning. The estimated cost of over $400,000 alone for sidewalk and tree removal is a substantial amount that could be better utilized within our own town. These funds could support other community projects such as improving local parks, enhancing public services, or investing in educational programs. It is crucial to allocate our resources wisely to benefit the entire community. As someone who understands and assesses risk for a living, I can confidently say that this proposal does not offer a win-win situation. Instead, it imposes unnecessary changes that would negatively impact our neighborhood. Many residents would lose a significant portion of their front yards, altering the character and feel of the community. The "if it ain't broke, don't fix it" mentality applies perfectly here. Our neighborhood has functioned well for decades, and there is no pressing need to change it. In conclusion, I urge you to vote against the potential sidewalk installation and/or the narrowing of our streets. Let us preserve the unique character and beauty of our neighborhood while using our resources more effectively for the greater good of our own town. Thank you.
Thank you, and you had five seconds left. Good job. You guys are doing great. Okay, who's next? Can you just wait till everybody talks? Because maybe it'll get answered by somebody else. Okay. Who's next? You can sign the paper and decline to speak. We will not ever force anybody to speak. We want this to be a really welcoming environment, so everybody's free to change their mind.
I'm Nancy Landerd. I live at 225 Forest Lake Drive. I have lived there since 1987, built the house. The contractor who we worked with told us that we would never have sidewalks because we had really big streets. So we kind of took him at his word, which is probably not a good thing. He's a contractor. But anyway, we were told we were not going to have sidewalks. My only other question, I guess I have, Mark, would be if you make the road narrower, what happens to the end of our driveways? Do you, like, move the driveways out at your taxpayers' expense? Or do we pay for that? And also, when my contractor, the driveway contractor, put in my driveway, he put in the area for the sidewalk. So what happens to that sidewalk patch? Does that have to get physically moved too? Just a question. Thank you. So what happens to that sidewalk patch? Does that have to get physically moved to? Just a question. Thank you.
There's no cost for any of the alternatives. That are proposed to go to the homeowners and if. Your if sidewalks are chosen or approved to go in. And and a sidewalk exists in your driveway and it doesn't line up with where the sidewalks are located. So if, for example. The narrowed street option is chosen and it doesn't line up, we would have to take out the sidewalk, the driveway and replace it all. And then put in a driveway, extend your driveway to the curb and gutter, to the new curb and gutter location, so.
Okay, thank you. Whoever's next, come on up.
Thank you, everyone, for allowing us to speak. We really appreciate it. We really appreciate all the. Just transparency on it and actually being notified. That was really nice to get. Um, hopefully, everyone, I was the fellow who sent over the photos via email. Pictures worth a thousand words.
So hard, but you need to do your name and address first.
Pardon me, I'm so sorry. Carl Sanger, one zero five Ivanhoe Drive, Milton Junction, Wisconsin. So to start off with, our subdivision is the Forest Lake subdivision. We've been there since eighty-six, second owner. Romar, they do not have sidewalks and they're over by Milton West. Romar is a little kind of horseshoe drive. They don't have sidewalks either. They're right around two thousand. And also another area where we wanted to live was going to be Rivendell, the big yellow house. They didn't have sidewalks either, but we couldn't get that one. That was right around twenty eleven. Milton Junction, we do not have sidewalks. According, so and now we're going to go through some data, not just feelings. Uh, the twenty twenty-four city results survey, um, only like a hundred and sixty people of us. Took it out of five thousand people who live in our town. So those are the people who really, really care. And these are the people I want to listen to. So as we look at this, street repair was one of the major concerns of the community. Fifty-three percent of the people viewed our streets as fair or poor. Forty percent really thought they were pretty good. But fifty-three percent, according to our survey, said they were fair or poor. But when we look at the ease of walking in Milton currently. Eighty-five percent viewed it as good and excellent. The walkers are already happy. They don't need more sidewalks. Our sidewalk allocation at this time is just fine. No, people feel for the sidewalks are in good shape. We want our streets repaired. How are we going to repair these streets? In April of seventeen, Milton decided to get a wheel tax. I just paid for one of our vehicles. Usually it's a hundred bucks, paid a buck thirty. Where's that thirty bucks going? Revenues are estimated at about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars per year for our cars and trucks. We have about fifty-six hundred cars and trucks in town. That's basically one vehicle per resident. I have four. We're a driving town, not a walking town. Let's spend our hard-earned money on roads. When I drove here, I didn't see one person walking. All I saw was cars. Um, the project is estimated to be about a million dollars with sidewalks. If you want to go with the really good option, we're doing one million one hundred and eighty-one thousand. That's going to help the tree people. It's going to make a really small little driveway. Go past my house. I've already painted green lines of how short the driveway will be. It is one car length, Dawn.
Ten seconds left. Sorry.
That's it. We're gonna, we're gonna save a lot of money by keeping the trees and I'm. Besides all the climate change, heating and cooling, financial impact for homeowners, losing the bus service and the old growth trees. And I'm going to skip the Lorax reading and the Robert Frost poems about trees.
Okay, you could pass them on to somebody else. Um, and I love the Lorax, so. Alright. We 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 don't share time, unfortunately. That's but come on up, whoever's next. I can I can tell you that I received two separate emails from residents in the subdivision and both of them were against having sidewalks. So I wanted to make sure that I said that. And you know, come on up. This is this is your time dedicated to you, dedicated to listen to you and. You know, don't be shy.
Hi, my name is Ashley Williams. I live at twelve thirty Willen Drive. I have two very, very young children. They're two and five years old. And we walk the neighborhood every single day of the summertime. I we ride bikes, we walk. Um, and I just want to say there's never a time that I have not felt safe. Um, one thing that's lovely about our neighborhood is it is a circular subdivision in which it's just us, the neighbors. And we all have a lot of respect for each other. And I'm against the sidewalk project too, even though I have young children because it significantly impacts. My family and our way of life. Our backyard is an in-ground pool. It's not safe for our kids. Our kids play in our front yard. We're the only street that has a playset in our front yard for that reason and. Um, sidewalks would significantly impact like I feel like their safety and also take away from their yard space and their time to play. In addition, we have underground piping from our pool that goes to the street in our front yard, so. Any work done, I understand financially to fix that would be our responsibility. But it's another additional financial cost that we don't have necessarily in our pocket. Um, along with losing busing that we rely on for our our children, we'll have to look at daycare and other options for them, which is another significant. Financial cost. I just want to say that we like we feel really safe in our neighborhood. I have neighbors who also have young children that couldn't be here tonight. We walk together all the time. Um, we would lose our trees, our places for our kids to play, the way we use our yard. And our um, our stuff right now, and then there would be a lot of financial strain for us with this project where I feel like if we. Just replace the desperate need that we have for roads. The city would save money, my family would save money. Um, and I think a lot of other neighbors would financially be in a better position as well. Um, so I just ask that your consideration coming from someone who utilizes their front yard every day, that it's nice outside. To please uh, look at not doing sidewalks and just fixing our roads. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, I'm just gonna ask for a, oh, go ahead. Uh, did you do three minutes? Two, oh.
I only did two.
You have one minute, go.
Okay, so I have one minute. Dawn Sal Brady, one oh four Ivanhoe Drive, and I have one minute. And I just thought maybe you guys need a visual. I don't know, I like visuals. Who does not want sidewalks? Raise your hands. Lots of hands up. Who does not want our key trees cut down? Raise your hands. Lots of hands. Who wants our streets to stay as wide as they are? Raise your hands. And who loves our neighborhood? Raise your hands.
Alright, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, anyone else that would like to comment on this? Feel free.
I'm Sherry Saxer and my address is fifty thirty-five Northwest Roderick Road in Milton. And I have nothing to say except I hope you guys. Get what you want, but I have, this has nothing to do with that.
Do you want to wait till your item comes up on the agenda? Is it related to this or something?
No, it isn't. So I'm I'm kind of like the odd girl out unless somebody else wants to. Somebody else wants to.
If it's okay with you, I just want to double check to make sure there isn't anybody else on this particular agenda item. Okay, I have one question. I might think of more. But in regards to the borrowing. Um, this would be a portion of an overall borrowing package and we don't. We haven't decided or have we decided whether we're going to go to bond for it?
We will be going to bond for it. It'll be a bigger overall borrowing for other projects as well. That are upcoming in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six in this borrowing.
And then how many years?
We have a borrowing policy that aligns the length of the term for the borrowing. I believe this would be a ten-year or a seven, but I think it's ten, but that's a policy, not an ordinance. Those decisions can be determined.
And then I'm assuming, but I don't want to assume anything, that we do not know what our interest rate would be.
Correct, and we won't know that until we start the proceedings of the bond agreement.
And then we do, do we do a ratings call for this?
Yes, we'll have to do another ratings call.
And the ratings call helps determine the interest rate, correct?
Correct, and we did a rating call two years ago and it had improved from prior years. And nothing has changed within the city that would negatively impact the rating.
And then if we went with the. Most uh, most expensive, I guess, for a better term. That would, would that impact cost payers and our, you know, the interest that we pay back if. We did the most expensive one?
Can you clarify the question a little?
So there's one, so there was a comment made that we could save five hundred some thousand around that. Am I correct on that? If we didn't do sidewalks? So. Would we? Would we decrease the borrowing by that then? Or would that be something that would come back to council to fill in with additional projects to borrow money for? Or what are, what are we thinking?
The projects are included in the caplin improvement plan, so that's where these projects came from. The schedule was determined in the caplin improvement plan. If sidewalks were not chosen, we would likely go back to that plan and see what else. What other work is scheduled? And see how the impact of the financials would change. So that may mean less borrowing, that may mean shifting another project that's scheduled into a different year. So there's some moving parts with that, but. That's about the simplest answer.
So it's a little bit. Uh, fluid about what the the final borrowing amount may or may not be.
That's correct.
Alright, um, council, uh, do you have questions?
So if I remember correctly, president of the past has been to add sidewalks whenever we redid a road typically, correct?
We start all street projects by looking at the entire street, so that's utilities, street pavement, sidewalks. Historically, we have added sidewalks on some and we have not on others, so.
What determines that?
Sometimes it's been financial, sometimes it's been council decisions. I mean, it depends how back you want to go. Look, I suppose.
So to clarify, there isn't like, um. Maybe there is and we just don't follow it. There isn't an ordinance.
There is no ordinance requirement to install sidewalks on a pavement reconstruction or pavement rehabilitation.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Any other questions for council?
If we were to narrow the road, comment was made that if um, about how narrow the extensions would be to the driveways. They actually narrow the driveways would be made to match the existing width of the driveways.
The extensions would extend at the. It'd be the existing width, so wherever the driveway was cut, it would be extended out at that width.
Not all of you were at Public Works and. All of council can't really attend Public Works either because we would have a quorum. Um, so I'm gonna just fill in a little bit of things that Public Works heard. From from people that attended that meeting and responses and questions that uh, Public Works members posed. The, there, there were some plans. That curved the sidewalk and would go around some trees and then some trees would be left. However, it was, it's an unknown whether if we did that or not, those trees that were left would be damaged. Is that correct?
Uh, we did not develop plans for that, but we did have discussion about possibly trying to do that, and you're correct. We didn't. There, we don't know how many trees could be saved. Um, how many trees may be impacted down the road because of the proximity of the construction work. So we we have not developed plans for that alternative, but there was some question and discussion about that.
I believe I had made a comment that, and there were other comments or examples of streets that didn't have sidewalks. Um, I had made a comment that Elizabeth Street up by the hos- not the hospital, I got a hospital on my mind right now. By the high school did did not have sidewalks when we did that. Is is that correct? Did I get that right?
Elizabeth Street did not get sidewalks when we repaved Elizabeth Street. That's correct.
Anybody else from Public Works have anything that I might have missed to kind of recap for people that weren't there? Ken?
Yeah, I was at the Public Works Committee meeting also. I will tell you, all of you, coming in here tonight, I had not made up my mind at all. Was pretty much up in the air. Listening to the comments at the Public Works Committee meeting and again tonight, though, one of the concerns that I have. There appears to be a prevailing feeling that this is a private neighborhood. And that no one else really should be there. There's been veiled comments of that nature. Uh, some not so veiled. Uh, straight up, actually tonight you said, uh, just us, who we need there. Also, in an email actually that you sent. Pretty clear, I don't want strangers walking through my property while they're playing in reference to your children playing in the yard. I do have trouble with that. When the council makes a decision, we do sincerely want to hear what everyone has to say. But we also have to think about the community as a whole. And how that neighborhood fits into the community and not just what the individuals that live there desire. And those comments came through pretty loud and clear at the Public Works Committee meeting as well. And so when I talk about those things, when I look at the decisions to be made here tonight, we need to think about those things as well. Uh, the city has also looked at, tried to address. All of the concerns that are brought up by the citizens in every single meeting. Uh, it'll take up the yards, the city said, hey, well, narrow the streets. That adds three and a half feet. That the city is just going to say, here you go, here's three and a half feet, two yards, all the way down. The trees, we looked at the replacement cost of trees. So I guess I'm not sure where we go from here and and how this goes, me personally. And I will tell you all, I haven't made up my mind yet because I don't know what I'll do until I cast that vote, but I wanted everyone to be aware of that as well. That when you come and talk. Those words, they have some weight. And you know what I'm saying?
I would, from my perspective, I was my understanding that you would vote tonight to. So we can bid out this project, right? Is the intention is, or when do you want to start this project?
We would like to get the project out to bid, but. Schedule is determined by the council too, so.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, um, one other question I want to, I want to ask. If the council, so if we delayed it, does it delay the borrowing and delay other projects? That are encompassed by this borrowing and impact, impact other?
It would delay the bidding. And and completing the project design and the plans. Uh, the borrowing would also be delayed. I don't believe there would be other negative impacts to other projects because of the borrowing being delayed though at this time.
So I had heard um, that a council member was willing to make a motion, so. Does anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion. Is anybody, nobody has anything else to say?
Yeah, uh, in the comprehensive plan was, do you know if there's any. Possibility of any further development around this area in the future, near future goal?
Um, I believe the area to the west is included in the city limits and that's zoned residential, I believe. We do get inquiries from time to time, but there's nothing planned at the moment.
I I did have a comment that I wanted to share. I'm gonna start by saying I think there's a benefit to sidewalks. There are benefits to sidewalks in a lot of ways and there's some research that shows. Surprisingly, uh, that communities with sidewalks are valued higher. Uh, that properties are valued more. There's research that shows that um neighborhoods become more cohesive uh when people interact with each other. Um there are a lot of arguments that can be made for sidewalks. And I'm um really uh feel strongly that as we develop new areas of the city, there need to be sidewalks, that that is part of what we build. Uh we don't build uh new neighborhoods with no sewers. Uh we don't build new neighborhoods without curbs. Um uh you know, all of those things are true. Um I did take time to go over to the neighborhood and drive around. Um you need to have your road fixed, I'll tell you, uh there's no question about that. Um the streets are really in poor condition. I do think that in this particular instance, um I guess I'd use the analogy that train left the station uh in nineteen eighty-seven. Um there should have been sidewalks that were installed uh when this development went in. Um that should just be part of what we do is we build sidewalks because we connect neighborhoods with other neighborhoods. We connect neighborhoods with schools, we connect people with each other. However, given the situation that we've got where there's been spotty implementation on the redoing of s- uh of, of um roads and streets. Um uh I would be inclined to vote for, let's do the street and not do the sidewalks. Um that's where I come down in spite of the fact that I think it is really, really good that neighborhoods have those sidewalks. There is one option, and I don't know whether we've explored that option or not. Uh but there are instances in which um streets are constructed uh at what we have, which is a, a wider width. Um but rather than a sidewalk, there is a, uh you know, think of it like a, a lane uh that's a bike lane uh along the curb edge. Um that isn't, um that, that's marked as such so that people understand that this is not a lane of traffic. Um I think that that might be a consideration that would um save some cost. It certainly would save some trees. Uh and um I think it would be a, a compromise that would achieve some of what we're looking for in terms of that uh interaction in the neighborhood uh without some of the costs that's there.
I, I just have a question for Mark. If we do um bike lanes, do we prohibit parking then?
I think you would almost, well, there might be enough width, we'd have to look at the section that you could have a bike lane and still have parking, but I'd have to evaluate that. But if we wanted a bike lane, um again, to, to know for sure, we'd have to look at the, the section with, I don't know. Gary, Gary's here, he, he's still working on the design for Bexton Woodman, but.
That's what we're talking about, is whether, whether you could have bike lanes on both sides and have parking.
And is there a penalty if someone parks in a bike?
Yeah, it would be, yeah, that's what I'm asking is would we be able to allow parking? So for example, and we don't allow parking on Madison Avenue, but we've, we, we don't have parking on Madison Avenue, we have bike lanes. But we looked at bike lanes on Parkview and I remember that in that conversation we couldn't do it because we would have to eliminate parking, do you remember that too, you guys? Yeah.
Is, is there a necessity that the bike lanes have to be on both sides?
We'd have to change our ordinance.
Does that have to be determined now?
Part of the problem with that one, though, I think was also the width of the street. Was more the issue, not so much, that was what was limiting the parking as well as the bike.
Right, and that's why I was bringing it up because we don't know what the width of the, so there could be, go ahead, Mark, and speak to it. But there could be other unintended consequences, I guess.
Well, I, in our quick guest estimation here, um I, I think we could do sidewalks. I'm sorry, parking and bike lanes on both directions on the existing street section. I would just note the su- uh the bike lanes would not be a pedestrian way, so you still wouldn't have like a walking path.
And we wouldn't have anywhere really for those connect to, because we'd go to a road that doesn't have bike lanes.
What do you mean?
It wouldn't, it would go to an area that doesn't have a bike.
West Madison Avenue, which doesn't have, uh at that point, doesn't have.
There's sidewalks.
Has sidewalks, yes, but.
You'd have to go to, to pick up the sidewalks on West Madison Avenue.
Would we need to change the ordinance then for a parking restriction for people to park in the bike lane?
I think there'd be room to have the parking and the bike lane.
I'm saying, do we have an ordinance that prohibits parking in a bike lane? Or would we need to create or change an ordinance that would prohibit individuals?
So previously, when the council discussed this, there was talk of having to change an ordinance. But I'm wondering if, you know, you wanna just call the question and then if we bring back bike lanes, that is, that could be a different issue, because we'd have to change.
Can I do one more thing? It's gonna be a little, everybody up there, the bike lane, you did a show of hands earlier. Trying to work with you guys, man.
Okay, okay, alright, alright, thank you, okay.
Can I make my motion?
One more question.
One more question.
Alright, so if we were to narrow the road down to thirty-three feet from forty feet, just curious, could the sidewalks be in that say seven, you know, fit right up against the roads, so it actually falls right where the old path of the road was?
Um from what I recall, design guidance would recommend a minimum of three to four feet between, of a terrace. So we wouldn't have the sidewalk right behind the curb, and that's for probably mostly safety reasons, but you know.
Is that a statutory requirement or just the way it's done?
There's a design, there's, there's pedestrian and bicycle design guidance manuals that are produced by WISDOT that would offer that information.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, because that people have spoken multiple times, some, and, and others have, so let's, let's get on with it.
Now, I'm not originally from Milton and I grew up and have lived in areas that don't have sidewalks and enjoyed them and loved them and I didn't have to shovel. And from, I mean, I would take it, you guys live there. If we need to change it at any point in the future, I, my motion is to move ahead with just the street and no sidewalks and no removal of trees.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second, all those in favor of this motion say aye.
Could I request one clarification?
Yes.
This is the very original plan, correct, with outside walks? Maintain the normal street width.
Yeah, that's what she said. No width change, all trees are saved. Yeah, you did, yeah, you did, yep, alright, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, the ayes have it. I, I'm just gonna ask you to stay for the whole meeting and do team building with us.
Sorry, you guys, you gotta stay.
Thank you, appreciate you, appreciate your time. Okay, well, let's get him, let's get him, uh sure now, what? Alright, I gotta, I gotta sign back on here. Alright, our next, our next really interesting topic. Um discussion and possible action regarding a state municipal financial agreement for improvements at the intersection of John Paul Road and Madison Avenue. Okay, we're talking about the intersection of John Paul Road and Madison Avenue. Does, is everybody with me? Everybody know what one we're on? Okay, and thank you, at any time, if you do not hear us, or I'm the one that's always not speaking clearly or leaning into the microphone. Please feel free to just raise your hand and just say like, we can't hear, that's a valid complaint. That I get every now and then, so please, please let us know, we want you to be able to hear. If you can't hear, that means people watching at home and in the recording can't hear either, so, alright, Mark, thank you.
The Wisconsin Department of Transportation has reached out to Milton to request authorization to proceed with a grant-funded intersection improvement at the intersection of John Paul Road and Madison Avenue. WISDOT has prepared a highway safety improvement program project application to perform improvements at the intersection of John Paul Road and Madison Avenue. WISDOT reviews crash rates on state routes and this intersection is included in a location of interest report due to the number of crashes during the review period, which was two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two. This section of State Highway fifty-nine is considered connecting highway, therefore maintenance is a responsibility of the city. Because a connecting highway carries state highway traffic on city-owned roadway, the state provides connecting highway aid to help maintain the roadway. The proposed intersection improvement project would be, would be performed under a separate agreement with WISDOT. WISDOT proposes a compact urban roundabout for the improvement. The application notes that traffic signals and an always stop were considered as viable alternatives. However, safety and efficiency are better with the roundabout. The application also indicates that all three alternatives will be considered throughout the public involvement process. A temporary always stop may be installed until the final improvements are completed. The state municipal financial agreement attached provides the terms for the project, it has been reviewed by the city attorney. The agreement was reviewed by the Public Works Committee at the January twenty-seventh meeting, which forwarded a favorable recommendation to the common council. The SMFA provides the total project cost is estimated to be more than one million five hundred thousand dollars. Of this, the city would only be responsible for funding twenty-five percent of the project design and none of the project construction. Therefore, the city's financial responsibility is estimated to be seventy-five thousand dollars. This does not include staff time or work that is now related to the highway construction, such as sanitary sewer or water main improvements. The terms and condition of the agreement indicate that if items are identified during the design phase of the project, the agreement will be amended to reflect those costs, so for example, water main or sewer. Part five also indicates that if Milton withdraws from the project, it shall reimburse the state for any costs incurred by the state on behalf of the project. Staff is seeking direction on whether to, or not to proceed with the SMFA for the highway safety improvement project at the intersection of John Paul Road and Madison Avenue. And Chris Wells is here from WISDOT, if there's questions specific to the project for WISDOT.
Um so if the council votes to move forward, they're not, I just wanna make sure they understand, and I understand. They're not necessarily voting for a roundabout because that isn't been decided because they want pu- want public um engagement on that.
Chris, would you mind explaining the whole, whole design process?
Please, thanks so much.
Good evening, uh Chris Wells, I'm a traffic safety engineer with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Uh you, you're correct that the, uh, the process would be to move forward with the, the design at this point to bring it to a public involvement process. But the viable alternatives are also a traffic signal and a four-way stop. So it is not locking, it is not locking the city into one of those options or another at this point.
Okay, since he's up there, does anybody from council have any questions for him? You do, Teresa?
Okay, in looking at the diagram, I'm just wondering if um that space in a roundabout uh would allow, you know, during, let's say, dismissal and the number of cars, also uh having semis, uh buses and larger, a number of larger vehicles in that size of a roundabout.
Like farm implement?
A farm implements, uh all kinds of them.
And when you say dismissal, you're talking about uh students uh at the middle school and West Side Elementary and North Side that?
Yeah, quite a number of cars.
Sure, so the difference between a compact roundabout and a, a regular roundabout is that the uh, the islands are traversable, so the center circle and the splitter islands are, are traversable. And they're either as traversable raised pavement or the splitter islands could even be painted. So they are designed so that a larger vehicle would actually go over top of those uh go over top of the island or over top of the splitter, uh the circle or the island if necessary.
Okay, thank you. I have a question, and then that, it is um potentially, I mean, we have a lot of walkers in that area. Um you would have, I just wanna clarify for the roundabout, which I was totally against before today, but now I've done more research.
But you're not voting on that today.
I'm not voting.
You're not voting on a roundabout today, just for clarification, but I thank you for.
Right, I did more research, cuz I, my gut reaction was against it, but now I actually really like the idea. But I just wanna confirm, I understand where the crosswalk would be. Would there be an extra like yield sign or extra communication sign? Because we do have students going um through the roundabout sidewalk or crossing area?
So those type of details would be worked out in the design process. But the basic concept of a, of a compact urban roundabout is that there would be crosswalks on all four approaches that would go through the splitter islands. However, the proximity of, because it is compact, um a traditional roundabout has its crosswalks further back, allowing for one, like one car length uh in front of the crosswalk, whereas this is, is all compressed. So I, 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 I'm not positive if there would be separate pedestrian warning signs versus the yield sign. Now, again, we would work with the community on school zones and things like that to make sure the approaches and everything are properly signed. But at the actual roundabout itself, there, uh that might, it might just be the yield sign for the roundabout.
So a compact roundabout is like what we see in the neighborhoods in Madison, correct?
No.
No, what, what, can you give me an example of what, where one would be that I, we might know?
You don't, there is not one to, that I can show you, uh that you might know. Uh we are currently designing them elsewhere in the state. In Madison, they, they're, they're putting uh a raised island area in the middle of the road as a diverter, so to speak, to, to um slow people down, make people yield. Whereas the, the compact roundabout, uh in the concept that was shown is a hundred-foot diameter. That allows for a, a small circular area that would still allow for the type of, the type of circulation that you're familiar with larger roundabouts that vehicles circle through. But small enough that it's, there's really only room for, you know, a couple vehicles at a time to be within the roundabout. So it, it would fl- it would flare out all four corners um to accommodate the entry and the exit of, of vehicles from the roundabout.
Single lane or double lane?
Oh, single lane.
Single, uh so I assumed.
There was a drawing in our packet too.
Any other, Ryan, do you have a question?
Just saying there was a drawing in our packet that shows what it would look like too.
Easy, okay, so I realize we're not voting on the roundabout. But could our motion, could we make a recommendation if we're against it, or would that do us no good today?
Well, I think you would be making a recommendation with all the fa- without the facts.
We need to have all the.
Right, right, we just don't, because it's not designed yet.
I was asked that question, so.
Okay, do you wanna comment? I mean, I just answered the question.
Our goal uh in entering in the SMFA is to just move us into the design process so that we could get things on paper so that we have something to talk to. Right now, the con- the conceptual layout you have in your package is just two-dimensional. So it just does not take into account grade, the grading and, and everything. But again, we, a, um, a public process is part of this, and so to, you know, um if it is if the design turns out to be not acceptable, then that's the way the public process would work.
This is just to, to start the process of trying to come up with some type of improvement to reduce the number of accidents in this location, correct? to reduce the number of accidents in this location, correct?
Correct, the, the countermeasures for, for safety would, that are applicable, would be the roundabout, a traffic signal, or a four-way stop.
Ken?
I was just going to say the same thing, thank you. Just to clarify to everybody out there that came here for this tonight, we are not making any decisions. The only thing is that Public Works is looking for direction as to whether, just to start this process, to review the, what would take place there. There will be public hearings in the future as to exactly what that would look like once we have more information.
I have a question. So, I, I know it is in the packet, but my screen is blank right now. What timeframe are you looking at? Like, like, this year we do this, this year we do that, the next year we do that, like, it's years, we're not talking about months, we're talking about a years.
The federal funding that we are appropriating or laying out is 2030, so it's approximately a 2030 construction year. An approximate timeframe for the, the process is that it takes those years to lead up to that. So, typically, our first set of design plans is what we call our 30%, designs. That takes approximately 18 to 24 months. Then, that gives us direction as to the project, the, the type of project, the footprint. Then, we move through a few more iteration, at least a couple more iterations of, of design plans, and the right-of-way process, the environmental, environmental process. All of that would then run in, in parallel in those next few years, leading up to construction in approximately five years. So, truly, you know, three to four years of design, environmental, right-of-way work.
And I know you don't know the answer, but I just feel like we should have this as part of the mix, like, is there a possibility that that, we would get somewhere in this process and the federal funding is pulled, or is it, I mean, there's no guarantee, right?
That, that's sort of a loaded question nationally these days. That's, I guess that is honestly an unknown. Those, those are anticipated, those are anticipated future funding that, that have not been acted on yet by the federal government.
But it's been outlaid or allocated?
It's, that, that money would have been part of the last transportation authorization, federal transportation authorization. Those are typically up for reauthorization every five or six years. So, it's always possible that things change.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure we all unders- understood, so.
I had, I had a timing question as well. I'm assuming that we're not planning a solution for 2025 or even 2030, that we are trying to look into the future in terms of traffic flows and anticipated traffic flows. What, what is the design horizon that you'd typically be using?
Correct, the traffic analysis design horizon we use is the year 2040, so 10, 10 years post-construction.
I, I would express, you know, my thought about this, and, and that is, I think we all know that this is a troubled intersection. I doubt that there's anyone that has a driver's license who hasn't sat at that intersection for an extended period of time at some point. And so, you know, we know that this is an intersection that causes problems. If we don't go forward with the planning on this, it's going to be a long time before we have an opportunity to have someone other than the municipality pay for a solution. And we don't have money to pay for a solution. Our only hope of addressing the issue at this intersection is to get the state and federal funding that comes along with it. And so, you know, I'm, I'm going to vote for moving forward with the planning and hope that the conversation continues about what is the best solution for that intersection.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm not skipping public comment. So, I just wanted to make sure that you all had a good, solid informational foundation. And so, whoever wants to come up first to the podium? Yeah, yeah, well, you have to go up to the podium and give your first and last name and address, the, there's a whole process. It does, well, not handing, not handing out the pictures once you start talking. Yes, yep, yes, it does.
My name's Pete Petroff. I live at 5 South John Paul Road, right on the corner of that intersection. Basically, I'd like to clarify connecting highway status. You know, Chris and I have spoken, and thank you very much for your information, Chris. Paul, thank you for your help on this as well. Kind of came as a shock for Linda and I that this was coming down, but, so, connecting highway status, the way I understood it from you, Chris, is that Milton has the ability to provide signage and take care of the intersection as they see fit. You guys are connecting Milton to Fort to Whitewater, is that correct?
We have a microphone, thanks. We should have said that, we could walk around with a microphone.
Connecting highways are a, a unique legal status for a highway. We, we have a vested interest in the highway because it is the state highway, but in, as a, as a highway goes through many local jurisdictions, there's a, they are, there's a defined list, map, connecting highways. Connecting highways typically are maintained and operated, so to speak, by the local jurisdictions. We have a vested interest in safety and things such as if a traffic signal were to be added. But generally, connecting highways are the responsibility of the local jurisdiction.
Perfect, which gives us the opportunity I'm looking for. You know, Linda and I are, are not opposed to safety. For Christ's sake, we're the ones sitting on the corner, hearing the brakes scream, and we jump up waiting for impact, and then we go out. I've been personally out there helping people in their cars. So, we know what it's about, right? I was recently rear-ended on the corner of Fourth Lane, so I know what the accidents are all about. Looking at your package, DOT Project 3140-00-06-76, I don't see any terraces. I mentioned earlier that terraces are required. There's no terrace on this map. And if you look at the scale of the map, 100 feet, island to island, put that off to the northeast side or to the southeast side, those people now have a car within 10 feet of their house.
And are you talking about the compact roundabout now or a signal? The compa- okay, so specifically the compact?
Yes, so, compact roundabout, while they may be great for traffic flow, will cost us $1.4 million. I, I totally am against the compact roundabout for cost and efficiency. DOT has suggested alternate number two, which Linda and I have kind of done a little research on. If you look at alternate number two, which says, "Put in a four-way stop, put some flashing lights on the stop sign, put a stop sign ahead, warning up here," you'll actually start complying with Edgerton, Whitewater, Palmyra, and every one of those communities has a 25 mile-an-hour speed limit. You want to reduce accidents? Slow down. I can tell you in the summer that I can hear the race cars at 60, 70 miles an hour probably taking off from our corner, going all the way out to Clear Lake.
Okay, we have to-
My hearing isn't good.
Wrap it up.
Wrap it up. In summary, we'd like to see that made a four-way stop sign with flashing lights. It's going to cost you less than $75,000, which you would vote to approve anyways. So, $75,000, get it done. The pictures that you have there show the stop sign. The stop sign that's here in your package isn't even shown. The stop sign heading north on John Paul actually has three or four different things in the way of it. So, look at your pictures, the stop sign coming north, south, sorry, has a telephone pole right in front of it.
Thank you, and, and just for clarification, we are not allowed to vote on a roundabout, a stop sign, or a stoplight tonight. In fact, the entire council makeup, when that vote comes, is going to be very different than this council. So, so, just so for clarification, it, we're only voting on whether to move forward with the design process.
Yeah, and that was my statement, that for the $75,000 design advancement, you could fix the problem and be done.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the issue of moving forward to the design process? Thanks.
Lisa Brown, 16 Second Street in Milton. I'm a frequent walker at that, biker and runner at that intersection. We had a child that got hit on a bike coming home from school, summer school, get hit from a car at that intersection. We are very, very aware of the dangers of that intersection. Additionally, when we walk now, we go down to Vernal to cross because it's just not safe there. I would like to ask for a little bit more clarity for that statement that's in the packet from the DOT person. What would make, it's a very brief statement about the, the lights, the, why not consider lights more? What is the benefit to lights versus a four-way stop? I mean, I know what I assume they are, but from a professional and data-driven standpoint, can you address why one versus the other would be better?
Sure, so, traffic signals still have, still have crashes, unfortunately. Even four-way stops still have crashes. What the, from a data point of view, the operation is, is definitively better for, for delay at, at a roundabout versus the traffic signal or the four-way stop. Also, for a traffic signal, there might need to be some widening as well for a traffic signal for turn, for turn lanes. The, a roundabout is demonstrated to almost, or to, in some cases, completely eliminate fatalities and injuries, and we cannot say that about traffic signals and four-way stops. So, the roundabout has the best safety outcome and the best operational benefit.
I'd let you go more than three minutes. So, if you could pass your question on to your wife, and she could come up and speak, or someone else, I'm just trying to really be fair with everybody that wants to, to talk. To the podium in first and last name, and thank you so much, thanks.
It hasn't been mentioned, we're recording this, and it does go on like YouTube and stuff, so that's why you need to go to microphones, is so that other people can listen into the conversation and hear what actually happened.
Hi, I'm Linda Petroff. I live at 5 South John Paul Road on the corner, and he's saying that there will not be any accidents on the roundabout because it's been proven, but this is an unproven roundabout that's flat, and you have, you can drive over it. So, people aren't stopping at the stop sign, so why would they not go any slower or faster through a yield? They're going to go faster, not slower.
And that's a fair question, and, and again, the compact roundabout is intended to provide most of the benefits of a roundabout, but in that smaller space. So, it does not have the, the barrier curves and the, the physical diversion of drivers at, at an angle to force them into, into right turns, because that would-
So, they're not going to comply?
That doesn't fit in the, in the footprint that the, the urban setting that you live in has. So, I did not mean to make the case that a compact urban roundabout has all of the benefits of a full-size modern roundabout. I apologize if I sounded that way, I was just contrasting that to traffic signals and, and stop signs.
I, I'm just stating the fact that I think a roundabout, which everybody can just go at will, they're just going to go faster and wilder than they do now because they don't stop at a stop sign. So, they're just going to have free will to just go when they think they can. And right now, they're playing chicken with oncoming traffic, so it's going to be worse, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. So, any other comments on whether we should move forward to the point of looking at designing a variety of options? Any other comments from the audience? We cannot vote on a roundabout, a stop sign, or a stoplight tonight. Cannot, cannot, it's not going to happen. Please feel free to come up to the podium.
My name is Jennifer Quadi. I live at 501 East Madison Avenue. I just, I'm thinking back to something my, my dad said to me when I was a teenager. Just because you can doesn't mean you should. We have two stop signs. Why would we want to jump right away into something that there's a, quite a bit of concern about when we haven't tried other options? We haven't tried the simpler, the cheaper options. I'm pretty sure we can hammer in a, a stop sign a whole lot cheaper than we can build a whole roundabout and change people's landscape, you know? I live on Madison Avenue, and I, I know what they're saying about the traffic even on the east side of town. People are flying down that street, they're not paying attention. I can't see how a roundabout is going to be a wise choice. Thank you.
And that decision will not be made for a couple more years, is my understanding, just so, so like we're all on the same page. The actual decision of whether it's a compact roundabout or, or stoplights or stop signs would be a couple of years, 18 months, is that, I think, what you said? That, that, we can't, we just can't vote on that tonight. So, we're just voting tonight on, do we want to have a safe intersection there? Because we don't now, and we haven't for 30, 40 years, probably. I mean, I remember being here 30 years ago, taking my kids back and forth to school, and people being harmed at that intersection. So, the question tonight is, does the council want to address the safety concerns of that intersection? Yes or no? And that's all, that's all we're going to vote on right now, is whether we want to work with the DOT to address the safety concerns. Uh, no, no, actually, no, this- When, Mark, could you clarify when we would, when that process would start? And, and, no, we, it wouldn't just be $75,000 if we did it without DOT, but go ahead, Mark.
The $75,000 would be the design cost. That wouldn't be spent-
25% of the design cost.
Yeah, that would be our, our share of the design cost, the city's share. That would not be spent, you know, immediately or upfront. I, I'm, we'll get a bill from WISDOT as they proceed with the design. Prior to putting in stop signs, we would have to do some engineering work to have analysis done, stop more analysis prob- likely. I don't, Chris may have some additional input or feedback potentially, but I think that's part of what they're looking at in the design as well, is installing a four-way stop as an interim solution.
So, how much would be, let's just say the city wants to go alone. We don't want a partnership with DOT, we don't want any of their money towards a stoplight or a stop sign. How much would it cost the city? And it, it wouldn't happen soon, because this is not part of our capital improvement plan. But it's not in this year's capital improvement plan, is my understanding. I just, I, that wasn't my understanding.
I don't know, I mean, it, it may be less than the $75,000 to do that. I mean, certainly, this, purchasing the signs and installing them would be less. Any design work involved with that, you know, I don't know, we'd have to work with our local engineering firm to determine what that amount would be. to determine what that amount would be. Um, cause you, you know, you can't just go install stop signs necessarily without considering, um, the, the impacts to the intersection or the traffic. So, I don't, I don't have an exact cost I can give you today for that. I mean, we could look into that and bring it forward potentially.
I assume you'd basically end up having to do a bunch of studies, traffic flow studies, not only for that intersection, but other intersections that would be affected by adding in solar point and stuff, which would also add to some, you know, be part of those costs and stuff.
That wouldn't just be the cost, though? Mark, can you address that? Because that's not my understanding, that we, we could redo that entire intersection for ten thousand dollars.
Well, that would be just for the stop sign installation work. And Chris, I don't know if you have anything additional regarding...
Oh, and can you just come up to the, come up and, and then, if you want us to go through the packet number by number, so people understand what those numbers actually mean, we can do that too. But Chris, go ahead. And I, I can't have the conversation back and forth.
Sure. So, in, within the application, those numbers for us are a placeholder for, for interim improvement funding. So, we're, we currently have about forty roundabouts in the southwest region programmed, and one of the common questions we get from, through the public involvement process is, it's gonna take you a few years. What are you going to do in the interim? And so, even when a four-way stop is not, doesn't meet the warrants that are, um, the number of cars that, that, uh, qualify for a four-way stop, uh, we are allowed to do what's, what's called an interim four-way stop in advance of a future project, such as a roundabout or, or a traffic signal. So, that, that number is in there as a placeholder for, for us mainly, um, so that we can fund interim improvements, cause our, currently our, our maintenance funding does not allow us to, um, meet the needs of, um, potentially forty locations that need additional, um, infrastructure. The one thing I would comment on, on, on the cost, and I, I would agree with Mark, you know, it, it's, it could, it probably would be less than seventy-five thousand dollars, but you would need to look at the fact that it's, you're changing a historical, uh, the, that Madison Avenue does not currently stop. Madison Avenue has never stopped. So, uh, you might be looking at, um, overhead stop sign beacons. So, that's a, a foundation and a, and a, um, a trombone arm pole, as we call them. So, it, it, it's potentially not as simple as just a stop sign, but not, not, certainly not as expensive as, as a roundabout or a traffic signal.
Okay. Ken?
I was under the impression too, since this is a state highway, that the city can't just arbitrarily make those types of changes, that we have to work in concert with the state. Am I wrong on that?
The, again, the connecting highways are sort of weird in, in their legal status, but yes, the, 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 uh, changing of the intersection control is something that the state has a say in. Uh, so, we would have to work together in any, any change of the intersection control on, on...
I get the feeling that some of this, this confusion may be coming in, is that why doesn't the city just do this? Just slap some stop signs in there and be done with it? And I think that's, cause this is not the first time we've had this conversation. Then the unique thing here is, if you'll, just one second, is that we ha, finally have the state recognizing it and saying, we're gonna kick in here too, Milton, and we're gonna help out, and we're gonna try to improve this intersection, cause it's been recognized. Uh, so, we're kind of happy to have some of that state funding coming in to help us out. And my understanding always, because you always see it on Facebook, why doesn't somebody do something? Why doesn't the city do something? And it's because we, I don't, that, my understanding is, we couldn't just, as a city, say, here's what we're gonna do state, because this is a state highway.
Yeah, and I do, I, and, and we can't have the back and forth, and, but I do wanna make a comment here. The city has been aware for decades that bodily and physical harm has been happening to human beings at that intersection. We know it. We know we are hurting people by not addressing that, both residents and non-residents. And we have an obligation to public safety. So, something, something does have to be done. We cannot not do anything. So, the question tonight is, do we wanna, we, and we have to work with the state, so it's not an option just to be like, we can go alone. So, the question before the council is, do you want to enter a partnership for the design possibilities of this intersection to just, to address the safety issues? And does anybody on council have any further questions or comments?
I guess there's no more. I pers, I feel we should, I put forward a motion to, uh, proceed with the SMFA with the HSIP project at the intersection of John Paul and Madison Avenue. Have the staff proceed with that. Did I say that right? There's a lot of acronyms in there.
Yeah, so you're asking staff to, or authorizing staff to enter into the agreement with WISDOT for the SMFA for the...
Yes, because there's just to move forward and start this process, correct? Yes.
Okay, that's your motion?
Yes.
Okay, everybody...
As good as it was, or as horrible as it was.
And, and Teresa seconds it? And, uh, does everybody understand on the council what that motion is? Any questions or clarification you would like to be made? Okay. All those in favor, say aye. And is there anyone opposed? Did everybody vote? Okay. Thank you very much. Just so we're clear, we're just moving into the design phase of it. There is no decision on a roundabout, no decision on a stoplight, and no decision on stop signs. But there will be many public hearings and opportunities for you to come and talk again about what is the final solution gonna look like for that intersection. And that will not take place until five years. But we're gonna design right up until that phase. So, if you have further questions, right? Not tonight, not tonight, cause we're done with this agenda item. What, uh, what I'm gonna tell you is, if further questions come up, please reach out to council. Please, you know, get your questions answered, and when, so in, uh, eighteen months or twelve to eighteen months, we'll hear back from you again. All right. Thank you. Thanks so much. And thank you, everybody, for attending. Huh? Oh, yeah. Discussion and possible action on the sale of approximately point eight acres consisting of portion of V dash twenty-three dash eleven thirty-one A and V dash twenty-three dash ten eighty-eight point three.
Chuck Jackson has made an offer to purchase approximately point eight acres from the city of Milton. Uh, Mr. Jackson has offered eighty thousand dollars for sections of V twenty-three one one three one A and V twenty-three one zero eight eight three, um, as indicated as in the attached map. Uh, Mr. Jackson did update that map today, and you have that, uh, sitting next to you. It is not in your packet. Um, currently, that area is connected to the Milton Cemetery, but would need intense work to make it suitable for cemetery plots, uh, including earthwork and tree removal. Other adjoining areas may be of better use, uh, to suit the cemetery expansion, if the city chooses to increase the area of the cemetery in the future. A public works committee has reviewed the proposal and recommends approval of the, the city council. Uh, fiscal impact, the city of Milton would see eighty thousand dollars go to the general fund with, uh, sale of the parcel. Um, the city administration takes no position on this item. Uh, but, uh, in lieu of, uh, new information coming today from Mr. Jackson, if, uh, the council so chooses, uh, would, uh, appreciate our recommendation to negotiate and, and bring back a final offer of sale to council.
Questions or comments?
And, Mr. Jackson is here if you have any questions.
I will say, I did walk the, uh, property, uh, that area as well, and there definitely is a decline that occurs, and it is very heavily wooded lot right now. That's pretty, uh, wild growth with some old existing pine trees and things like that. But there's definitely a decline that occurs right about where the property land divide will be, if we sell the property to, uh, Mr. Jackson. And so, it does kind of make some sense then. It's not really, it would take some work to make it flat and low for a cemetery.
Any other questions or comments, and Mr. Jackson, Jackson, would you like to offer comments? Or just here for questions?
Um, I'm just here for questions. Chuck Jackson, three ninety, East Madison Avenue. The only thing I wanna clarify is, there is a document that I sent today. Um, the, the acreage was estimated at point eight acres. It's actually point six nine or point seven two, depending on which way you go. Um, once they did the field survey, that's why I'm asking to go out the extra thirty feet, which makes it point seven two, um, because it's gonna be easier to plant vegetation.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
I would, uh, move that we approve the sale of, um, is it point seven two, point seven two acres?
You just want the legal description.
Uh, the legal description, okay. Uh, portions of V twenty-three third, uh, eleven thirty-one A and V twenty-three ten eighty-eight point three, um, uh, at the, um, uh, amount of eighty thousand dollars.
Or did you want it to be just negotiated, or, that's not the fine, you wanted room to negotiate that, or give staff direction to negotiate?
I would presume what you would like, just from a legal perspective, so it's binding on both parties, is to, is to, um, authorize staff to enter into negotiations with Mr. Jackson to bring back, you know, a, a offer to purchase for review and approve, possible approval of the, of the council. Just so, so you have a, a legal document that defines exactly what, what is gonna take place with the sale. That's what I would recommend anyway.
Why didn't I withdraw and...
Start over?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
All right, yeah. What he said. I would move that we authorize the city, uh, to enter into a negotiation for the purcha, or for the sale of portions of V twenty-three eleven thirty-one A and V twenty-three ten eighty-eight point three, um, to Mr. Jackson, and return to the city, uh, with a, um, a draft agreement for, for consideration.
Second.
There you go. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, we're gonna move on to the next item.
Sure. Just for clarification, this is gonna be for point seven two?
That'll be part of the offer to purchase that...
Okay.
What comes back to the council. Okay. Discussion and possible action on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five fifty-six and ordinance amending Article Five kennels.
Common council requested staff to research and develop an ordinance to allow for cat kennels. Ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-five five five six allows for cat kennels within the city and provides for regulation. Some of those reg, regulations include, uh, requiring licenses, um, regula, uh, excuse me, uh, maximum number of ten cats, uh, providing, uh, code enforcement officer to have supervision of that, uh, making sure there's sanitary care requirements, uh, providing authorization to enter and inspect any kennel, to make sure that they are following, uh, the ordinance, and, uh, that is the information that was, uh, requested for by council.
And go ahead. You're speaking on this item?
Pardon me?
Are you, you're speaking on this item, this agenda item? Okay, first and last name and address.
Sherry Saxer, and it's fifty thirty-five Northwest Ronoma Road in Milton. Um, I think this is the same thing, the cat breeding ordinance, Iden, Milton. Um, you're referring to the...
This ordinance would allow for cat kennels.
Okay.
For an owner to hold up to ten cats.
Okay, yeah. So, we're talking about the same thing. There's an article in the paper. The city council, or the council will be looking at possibly creating an ordinance that would allow residents to breed cats within the city limits. Um, maximum number of adult cats right now are three, and these people that have come up with this idea are asking that the maximum number would possibly be ten adult cats at a time. And this is for breeding. Um, I feel like this whole concept is backwards. We've been trying for years to stress spaying and neutering, and there are so many cats that are stray, that need and deserve loving homes. The shelters are completely full of compac, to capacity. To me, it sounds pretty close to a puppy mill for cats. Um, I spoke with Paul on the phone, and I said, are these people just asking if they can have ten cats to do the breeding? And he said, no, they want, anybody who wants to breed can have up to ten cats. I think it's, I don't even know the word, appalling, that at this point, that we would, I think somebody has to have a voice for the animals. You know, what, what do you do with the animals once the moms can't have kids or babies anymore, kittens? Um, I just think there's better ways to make money than to do it at an innocent animal's expense. So, I'm asking that we don't, we don't need to be breeding cats. And, you know, I talked to somebody in this room, and I said, why, what's the idea of this? And the person I talked to said, this is a special kinda cat. Well, every cat, every life deserves to be respected. And I just, I just think we're going backwards here. So, I'm asking that it, it doesn't go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Uh, any council questions or comments? Or a motion or clarification?
I just have a quick question. Where'd we get the ten, the number ten from? Where did that come?
Uh, Debra mentioned the number ten during the council meeting, and I believe, uh, Teresa mentioned that as well.
And did staff look at other communities that have ordinances, or did we look at other ordinances?
Yes, we did.
And do other c, communities have ordinances? Some do, or some don't?
Some do, some don't. Um, if they do, the number of cats seem to range from ten to twelve.
Ten to twelve.
What is the number if we have a dog breeding kennel in the city?
There is no limit on that.
There is no limit on that.
Um, one of the differences, because, uh, with this ordinance, uh, cat kennels would be allowed in residential areas, while dog kennels would not be allowed. And currently, dog kennels are not allowed in residential areas.
Okay, you have, you have one minute left.
I don't even need a whole minute. I just wanna say, I think we are considered humankind, and sometimes I wonder about that last word. I think we need to start taking care of the pets that we already have, the animals that we already have, and stop this. I mean, we gotta stop it. It's too many animals out there without homes, and I think we need to be more compassionate and less greedy. You know, this is a money-making thing, and it's not fair, and it's not right. So, there.
Thank you. I, the only thing I, I would like to say, because the, the folks aren't here, is that they originally started, they're a cat, they were rescuing cats from war zones. So, I just wanted to make sure that we are, we were clear on that. But go ahead, Ann.
Hi, Chuck Jackson. Um, I would just be curious if the ordinance identifies, when does a kitten become a cat? Or have you considered that, so that you don't end up with ten cats and forty kittens, and now you've got sixty cats?
Right now, currently, uh, the threshold is five months. After five months, that kitten is considered a cat. After five months, that kitten is considered a cat. There is no regulation or restrictions in any ordinance that I looked at about this, about how many kittens one area, one person could have.
But once they turn five months, they're considered an adult? Okay. And you don't have any more time, I'm sorry. Any other questions or comments from the council or anyone that hasn't used their three minutes yet? Okay. Then is there a motion?
I would make a motion to, I'm gonna need help, approve the ordinance, the change, the amendment of the ordinance, number two zero two five dash five, 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 six. And enact the waiving of the second and third reading.
Close, close.
Close, I'm close, okay.
It was just that you approve the first reading, waive the second and third.
Approve the first reading.
Waive second and third and adopt.
Waive the second and third and make a motion to adopt.
And adopt, okay.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no.
I'm gonna abstain, is there a tenant of mine?
Any ayes do we have? Can we just do a roll call because?
Aye.
Dan Smith. Go ahead, Jenny.
I'm abstaining.
Ryan Holmberg.
Aye.
Oh, Rouge.
No.
Wilson.
No.
And Walker.
Aye.
No.
Okay, the ayes have it?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
All right, the next motion is discussion and possible action on ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash five fifty-seven. An ordinance amending Section Six dash one seventy-three B concerning number of dogs and cats alone.
On review of kennel licensing, Section Six, one seventy-three B did not provide an exception for kennels and the number of dogs or cats allowed. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five, five, seven makes an exception for kennels in Section Six, one seventy-three B, limiting the number of dogs and cats. Those limits are addressed in Article Five Kennels. There's no fiscal impact with this ordinance. City administration recommends the approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five, five, seven. Enactment of an ordinance requires first, second, and third reading and a motion to adopt. If the council prefers, the second and third reading may be waived at the same time the first reading is completed.
I'd move approval of the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five, five, five, seven, which is amending Section Six, one seventy-three B concerning number of dogs and cats allowed. Approving the first reading, waiving the second, third, and adopting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'll abstain from this vote also.
All right, discussion and possible action on a request from the YMCA to donate land in Crossridge, Cross. Okay, let me start over with my mic on. Discussion and possible action on request from the YMCA to donate land in Crossridge Park.
The YMCA has requested the city donate land in Crossridge Park. The YMCA is interested in acquiring approximately ten acres of land to the east of the Parker YMCA. On this land, the YMCA is planning on installing football fields and soccer fields. The YMCA is anticipating partnering with Milton Youth Football to provide them a place to practice and play. These fields will be open to the public when not in use by the YMCA. The fields will be built and maintained by the YMCA. The development of this area in Crossridge Park for field space was indicated in the Crossridge Park Plan. The Parks and Recreation Commission has reviewed this request and have provided a favorable recommendation to the council to move forward. Fiscal impact, there'd be no fiscal impact on this land transfer. And then a recommended motion would be a motion to have staff work with YMCA to develop an agreement for the land transfer.
And I can tell you, this has been in discussions with the Y since Al Heelick was city administrator, because that is not property that the city is ever going to develop. And it was indicated through the Parks and Rec Comprehensive Plan to have fields there. I think most of us recognize that there is a field space shortage for group sports in the city. So just a little bit of background information on how this came before the council.
I know there's photos with it, but it's a quick question. That development is, I know that they're reseeding large sections of that to natural prairie grass land in that area. Is any of that going to be affected with this development?
That is currently farmland that we lease out.
That's still, that's not part of that? I tried looking at the pictures and I've been up there to do it, but I didn't know exactly what was still going to get reseeded.
That is the farmland.
Okay, thank you.
And this is it's kind of similar to what we did with the school district when we gave them the central park and the tennis courts for reference.
I'll move to have staff work with the YMCA to develop an agreement for the land transfer.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action on releasing one hundred twenty-four Sunnyside Drive from deed restrictions.
That's an interesting one. Back in nineteen ninety-four, Matco LLC, which is Precision Metal Fab, purchased land from the city. The city at that time put deed restrictions on the parcel. Mattock intends to sell the business and would like the deed restrictions removed. In nineteen ninety-four, the city sold two parcels of land to Mattock LLC. Several deed restrictions were placed on the parcels. The restriction that Mattock would like to see released stemmed from the city's option to buy back. The restrictions state, within five years of the date of closing on such parcel, such owner shall erect a building on structure or structure for such purpose or purposes as may be permitted under applicable zoning ordinance and are in accordance with the building codes. In the event such owner fails to perform this condition within the specific timeframe, the city of Milton shall, upon written notice to the owner, have the option to repurchase said property for amount of money equal to the purchase paid by the owner plus any special assessment. And B, if the owner decides to sell the building before any building or structure has been erected, the city of Milton shall have the first option for ninety days to repurchase said property for the amount of money equal to the purchase price paid by the owner plus any special assessment. On the first parcel, the structure was built and staff has indicated to them that the option to buy back is no longer valid. On the second parcel, however, five years from the date of closing has passed, but no structure was built. The city had an opportunity to purchase the parcel at that time, but did not exercise that option. The city of Milton still retains the first option purchased due to the sale of the parcel thirty-one years later. Matco has been paying taxes on the parcel for thirty-one years, since they have purchased the parcel. There'd be no fiscal impact to the city and staff recommends waiving the option to purchase on parcel V twenty-three fifteen oh eight point two.
I'll make the motion to waive the option to purchase on parcel V twenty-three fifteen oh eight point two.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action to amend Section Seventy-one fifty-three, prohibited parking. And there's a memo.
This is not an interesting one. Currently, city of Milton ordinance reads as follows for Section Seventy dash one five seven. Other parking restrictions, no person shall park or leave any motor vehicle on the following property except temporarily for the purpose of and while actually engaged in loading or unloading or in receiving or discharging passengers and while the vehicle is attended by a licensed operator. Subsection two reads, within ten feet of a fire hydrant or mailbox unless a greater distance is indicated by an official traffic sign. This section contradicts Section Seventy dash one five three, prohibited parking, which reads, parking shall be prohibited on the following streets, on all city streets, in front of or within ten feet of any curbside mailbox between the hours of seven AM and five PM, except on Sundays and the following holidays, New Year's Day, Martin Luther King's birthday, President's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas. The city's goal is to align the ordinance so conflicting language does not exist between ordinances. Section Seventy dash one five seven, sub A, sub two should now read.
Chief Saxi?
Yes.
Are you on fifteen or sixteen for the agenda item?
You could have cut me off sooner.
If you're on sixteen, just keep going. We'll go back to fifteen, keep going.
Is it easier since everybody's not following along to go back? Okay. Hopefully you were listening and not reading.
This is Paul's fault. The agenda is totally Paul's fault.
It's mine. Okay, so if we're now on the second parking one. The city's goal is to align the ordinances so the conflicting language does not exist between the ordinances. Section Seventy dash one five seven, sub A, sub two should now read, within ten feet of a fire hydrant unless a greater distance is indicated by an official traffic sign. The word mailbox has been removed since it is addressed under Section Seventy dash one five three. The second matter, the current section on parking ordinances within city of Milton does not address terrace parking. It is, however, located within the zoning section of our ordinances, seventy-eight, sub eleven seventy-three. Location of required parking, sub C, reads, no private parking shall occur within street terraces, non-residential driveways, or any other areas located within a public right-of-way not explicitly designated by the Director of Public Works for such use. Since this is not within the parking ordinances, it follows a different forfeiture schedule. A violation for parking on the terrace curves currently costs a hundred dollars versus other types of parking violations, which would cost forty dollars for most violations. The purpose of creating a subsection for this ordinance is to allow the forfeiture schedule to be consistent for parking violations and not adopt the general schedule for zoning violations. The third matter on parking ordinances within the city of Milton does not address vehicles parked or stopped blocking sidewalks. This creates a safety concern for pedestrians, whether on foot, a mobility device, et cetera, to safely move about on sidewalks. This addition to the other parking restrictions will allow for enforcement of vehicles blocking sidewalk, sidewalks, excuse me, which restricts the safe passage of pedestrians. The last matter concerns the parking of vehicles near crosswalks. Wisconsin Statute three forty-six point five three discussed prohibited parking in certain places, specifically crosswalks. The statute reads, no person shall stop or leave any vehicle standing in any of the following places except temporarily for the purpose of and while actually engaged in loading or unloading or in receiving or discharging passengers and while the vehicle is attended by a licensed operator, so that may promptly be moved in case of any emergency or to avoid obstruction of traffic, closer than fifteen feet to the near limits of a crosswalk. City of Milton ordinance seventy dash one five seven A follows the aforementioned statute, but leaves out the section pertaining to crosswalks. A fifth subsection should be added to include the language articulated above. The fiscal impact is determined upon time invested from the city's attorney. City administration recommends the common council authorize chief of police to work with the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending the parking restrictions as set forth in this memo from yours truly dated February fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Can you start over? No. Okay, so this is agenda item sixteen. And is there any questions or comments or emotion?
I would move, put a motion forward to authorize the chief of police to work with the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending the parking restrictions as set forth in this memo from the chief of police dated February fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor say aye? Anyone oppose? Back to fifteen. In summary, that memo says what?
High points.
This one's a little short.
High points.
Okay, high points. I'll hit the high points. If you guys want the readers digest, okay. Am I on the right one? Yes, okay, so Section Seventy-one five three, prohibited parking, we're talking Northside Drive along the east side of, parking is prohibited five hundred eighty-eight feet north of the north curb line to a point eight hundred twenty-two feet south of the south curb line of Sunset Street between the hours of seven thirty and four thirty PM, Monday through Friday. Currently, there's a section that is prohibited parking, whereas prohibited parking is allowed, but it does create hazards for buses and other vehicles and general passage from Northside or just in the general roadway. By prohibiting, by allowing that prohibited area to extend eighty-eight feet further south on Northside, it'll eliminate parking on a curve in a highly congested area where vehicles are exiting Northside. The current sign is posted improperly for the distance. It doesn't align with the current ordinance reading. So the proposed parking area, current, the proposed area would be in front of city-owned land and would not interfere with parking directly in front of the parcels at thirty-eight and forty Northside Drive. A second city street requiring parking restriction changes Ansley Street. According to Crew Operations Leader Paul Smith for the city of Milton, the roadway is only twenty-four and a half feet wide for several hundred feet going east to west. With parking allowed on both sides, the offset intersection at that location, it makes the passage of school buses, trailer vehicles, and plow trucks difficult. Smith also articulated the last snowfall, he wasn't able to clear snow due to parked vehicles. Currently, that section for prohibited parking reads, on Ansley Street along the north side thereof from west curb line of South Clear Lake Avenue to a point twenty-five feet west of the west curb line of South Clear Lake Avenue. Goes on and on. My recommended motion, the fiscal impact is none, it's just articulation within the ordinance. Recommending the ordinance be amended to read, on Northside Drive along the east side thereof from a point five hundred feet north of the north curb line of Madison Avenue to a point eight hundred twenty-two feet south of the south curb line of Sunset Street between the hours of seven thirty AM and four thirty PM, Monday through Friday. And regarding the Ansley Street parking, city administration recommends council amend ordinance seventy dash one five three, prohibited parking shall be prohibited on the following streets, on Ansley, on the north side thereof from the west curb line of South Clear Lake Avenue to a point two hundred twenty feet west of the west curb line of South Clear Lake Avenue. On Ansley Street along the south side thereof, from the east curb line of South Clear Lake Avenue to a point two hundred twenty feet east of the east curb line of South Clear Lake Avenue. I'll make a motion to amend ordinance seventy-one five three with the language that's put in the memo.
So similar to the last motion, is it to authorize the chief to work with the city attorney to prepare an ordinance consistent with this memo?
Yeah, that.
And I'll second it.
And I just want.
Adding, next time draw pictures.
No. Okay, I just, Brandon, chief, I want to say thank you for the time and the attention and the diligence. And you get to go at the beginning of the agenda next time.
I have a quick question, and I'm going to double check now. But I believe it is not Ansley Street, it's Ansley Ave. Sorry, bud. Well, if we're going to go as written, then it has to be the correct roadway. And there's no Ansley Street, I think we have an Ansley Avenue.
And it's going to be negotiated and worked with council to prepare the actual ordinance.
There you go. My pleasure, absolutely.
I will reread both memos this time.
You just do that for Ken and Ryan and Eric, you reread them. To your own team, I like.
I've read his memo.
I read it too. Confused between Ansley and Clear Lake and how far, two hundred and some feet.
I will provide pictures of the memo.
And a YouTube video if you're measuring.
Video?
Yeah.
And a PowerPoint.
There's the motion and there's the second, and we have a lot left to do tonight, so. All those in favor say aye? You want to oppose? You guys are doing great. Everybody is doing great. All right, that was fifteen and sixteen. All right, discussion and possible action regarding creation of artificial intelligence policy.
All right, creating an artificial intelligence AI policy is essential for ensuring the ethical, effective, and responsible use of AI technology within the city use. With the increasing availability and popularity of generative AI platforms, it has become necessary to outline the proper use of such tools while working at city of Milton. While we maintain committed to adapting new technologies to aid our mission, we also understand the risks and limitations of generative AI chatbots and want to ensure responsible use. Our goal is to balance our organization's obligation to protect and protect. Our goal is to balance our organization's obligation to protect employees. Suppliers, customers and the organization from harm against our organization's mission to provide our community with highly efficient and effective resource. There is no fiscal impact and staff is recommending approval of the attached AI policy tonight.
Alright, any questions or comments from council and I I do wanna say that staff worked a long time on this and did a lot of research. Um, and put together a really thoughtful policy, so I wanna thank you for that too, so.
Nice work and I wanna go ahead and make a motion to approve the artificial intelligence policy.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? I've been bragging about this policy for a while, so congratulations, everybody. Not every municipality has an AI policy. So we're really out uh, ahead of a lot of people I've talked to. Discussion impossible action regarding two thousand twenty-five farmland leases.
Uh, the City of Milton routinely leases uh, parcels out uh, for productive crop uses to reduce annual maintenance costs to the city. Uh, we've got uh, four uh, farmers that we've been working with, Hall Farms, Heth Farms. Uh, Brian and Jill Gunnick and Paul Hanuska. Uh, leasing the vacant city land for farmland generates lease revenue, reduces city city maintenance costs and supports late local agriculture. City administration recommends approval of the attached two thousand twenty-five farmland leases as presented.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Alright, discussion impossible action on approving a license for a secondhand dealer.
David O'Shea, owner of High Noon Armory, has submitted an application for a secondhand dealer license. Uh, Mr. O'Shea operates High Noon Armory located at twenty-four Front Street. He has applied for a secondhand dealer license to buy and resell firearms as provided in Sydney ordinance fourteen six seventy-two. A police chief Saxi has conducted the appropriate license investigation, has arranged for reporting as per ordinance fourteen six seventy-seven. Be no fiscal impact on the city. Uh, recommend motion his staff uh, recommends approval of the secondhand dealer license to D- David O'Shea. Pending submitting the bond required by fourteen sixty-six seventy-four two to the city clerk.
Any motions? Or questions or comments? This is a new issue.
I move to approve the secondhand dealer license to David O'Shea pending submitting of the bond. Required by fourteen dash six seventy-four parent to to the city clerk.
Second.
Any comments? Questions? All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose that motion carries? Discussion regarding, okay, so we've had me mow me. And uh, and we're gonna discuss that or no mow me, so there's no action. It's just we're gonna have a little conversation with tea. Just kidding. I'm expecting you guys to bring the tea on this issue.
So the agenda item is no mow me. Uh, we brought this back uh, this year again to discuss if we're going to continue. May mow me, no mow me. Uh, the, I did reach out to our staff to see what kind of uh, support. Or any complaints that were received and there were six complaints received. And there was one particular property that they used the may mow me as the reason why they could not mow. And then afterwards, uh, because it was too tall, they did reach out to the public works and said, I can't mow it um, at this point. So those were the concerns shared from the, from the staff side of it. Um, there have been discussions with staff of if it continues to have a conversation about a registration. So they have to physically either online or they can come in and fill out a form saying they are participating. Um, some other communities do this, um, and they have a registration, some of them have signed. So again, the staff would like some recommendations from the council on next steps or to stay the same as in the past.
But we don't have, it doesn't say action.
Attorney Shader, can we do some kind of direction?
Why, what I understand that it is that there be some discussion to give direction to come back with a recommended action by the com- council.
Without a vote or with a vote?
No, there'd just be consensus. It, they're just, the staff is looking for consensus on whether they want the, the staff to come back with. With some recommendation and incorporating the comments of the council. So won't be any other action tonight on the, on this.
You know, I've read more and more articles that say it's, it doesn't actually help anything. The no mow thing, it actually causes more harm than good. I don't have the facts in front of me right now, but it doesn't help the bees as much as they say. Articles I've read.
According to Eric.
According to me.
No supplemental material to share.
Sorry, I can Google it real quick and read. My dad sent me some.
Well, Google is a great source because it's always true.
He's a beekeeper too, if that helps.
I just have a quick question for staff. How much time does it take up annually when we have like the six complaints that come in about someone not mowing? And does it, if we, if it's no mow me and they. Do, does it require like DPW to go out to look at the property to come back with a possible action if we know that it's no mow me? Or I, I don't, guess I understand exactly the process here, why it's even being discussed.
The complaints are taken. Um, and then the code enforcement goes out after the date, the final date each year that's chosen. And they take a look at it and then come back and then if it is something that is not within the ordinance. After the no mow me is complete, then they go out and they do have to mow it and then there's the staff time to do that. Um, it is, it is passed on to the owner, but the, one of the concerns brought up is that the first. Mow is is cheaper sometimes than some contractors.
Okay, but if we're just allowing the no mow me and they're just violating it once they get past, we get into June and they're just not, then we would be. I guess I'm wondering is, is this the same yards if we didn't have no mow me that, cause there's some people just don't like to cut their grass and. We have to deal with that, otherwise we wouldn't even have a code enforcement officer. There's just, there's some people that just don't comply. Does it, did it increase because we had no mow me? Or is it the same people that are gonna not mow, whether it's May, June or August? I, I guess I'm curious, do we have any information on that?
Uh, I do not have any information specifically on that, uh, but the reason why this was put back on the agenda is that it was discussed at the last time. And then we had a couple citizens request that it be brought back. Um, plus ag- again, there has not been a specific policy. It's, that was for last year.
So were, were the, the residents that brought it back, were they wanting to uh, to, to not mow? Or wanting others to mow? Or what was that discussion about?
Uh, the two people that had requested, they had wanted it to not be allowed. Uh, because they felt that there was that excuse, that was the reason why, um, and it was not for the benefits that have been outlined. From some organizations.
And chief, do you have any insight on if they're the usual customers?
I know there are some properties that take advantage of no mow me. And when it comes time for code enforcement to address the properties. We're already behind where the grass is now at eight to ten plus inches, depending on how well may goes. Um, so that by the time it comes to actually enforcement action, we give them notice. We're all probably already into June at this point where they still haven't complied. So now they're at two months of uncut lawn. When finally then we contact public works to take it up and hit the property with a mower. Or. Chainsaws.
Were these people that the code enforcement had to deal with prior to no mow me being a thing and they were just that yard anyway?
I don't know exactly. I think there may have been one property that I could recall that was. Already not necessarily a nuisance property, but one that other code issues were taken up with.
What direction are you guys looking for, I guess, and and moving forward here?
Looking for directions.
For, then I guess, then I would recommend moving forward with at least finding out. Uh, do other communities have an ordinance or a policy or something that the community can go to that the city can look at its citizens and say? Yea or nay on this. I mean, I, something outlined, because otherwise if we don't have something, then how do you look at a commu- a mem- a citizen and go? Yeah, you can do it, but you can't, cause it's, it, it just seems kind of. I don't know, higgledy piggledy, I guess if that's a word.
So are you asking staff to? In those pretty technical terms, um. Bring back some information on what other communities are doing around ordinances.
Find out, are other community, communities regulating this or are they just saying, hey, it's no mow me, we're not gonna worry about it?
Remind me, did we not pass an ordinance on naturalization?
We did.
Yes, but that's a little bit different, Bill, by understanding, because somebody's not wanting to mow in May.
It is different, but if we were to just routinely enforce our. You've gotta mow, starting in May. Um, and we had people complain, gee, I wanna be great and let my grass grow. There's an option for them. Um, you know, plant some milkweed and, you know, whatever. Um, uh, that would be available to them. And so, you know, my, my thought, given the staff time that's involved. And it sounds like uh, public works uh, having maybe even not the right equipment. Uh, for easily, uh, you know, mowing if you get a particularly good growing season in May. Um, that we just enforce our grass ordinance all year long. And if somebody calls and says, I really wanna do that, no mow me. We s- point them to the ordinance that says you can have a naturalized lawn.
So right now we don't have an ordinance that permits no mow me.
That is correct.
So we don't need to do, we ness- wouldn't even have to do anything then if we're not talking.
And this comes about from discussions we've had over years now where we, people, a bunch of people approached us a number of years ago asking about no mow me. If we could go down that path and ever since, every year this time of year, we end up basically saying yea or nay. There's no been, not been an ordinance that necessarily dictates one way or the other, but it's basically been a council decision each year about this time of year. That's over the last probably four or five years, I think, so.
Well, to Bill's point, I agree, Bill. I, with his point, we do have an ordinance now. And if you want to have a natural yard, then we have an ordinance that already regulates that and and lays it out. I would amend my le- earlier statement. I didn't think of that, Bill, thank you. That we already have it in place, so mow or just follow the ordinance for uh, a natural lawn.
Is that clear?
That is clear for staff.
Okay. Alright, good job, you guys. Alright, discussion impossible action regarding a service agreement with ITU Absorb Tech.
The attached service agreement is to provide clothing to be worn by the city's two mechanics during the workday. Uh, provides clothing items and laundering of the clothes weekly as defined in the agreement. This agreement is a three-year agreement. Uh, staff researched several alternatives and found that ITU pref- provided the preferred clothing and the lowest cost. The weekly charge is thirty-seven sixty-five and this was included in the twenty twenty-five budget. The agreement includes a three percent annual increase. Staff is recommending approval of the service agreement with ITU Absorb Tech.
I'd move approval of the service agreement with ITU Absorb Tech.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Anyone oppose? Alright, moving on. Discussion impossible action regarding a rail spur easement in the Crossroads Industrial Park.
Uh, the attachment defines an easement that is located on the Signature Warehousing property for the rail spur that was constructed uh, as. Part of or to serve the Clausen Quality Chocolate um, area and now provides additional rail service to other businesses in the park. Um, the easement is necessary because if you recall, Putman Parkway was vacated just south of. A roadway was vacated just south of Putman Parkway and there was discussions regarding the easement. However, the easement had not been um, recorded at that time. So this creates the easement document uh, for recording. And it has been reviewed by city attorney and Signature Warehousing as well.
I'm move to approve the permanent rail spur easement between Signature Warehousing LLC and the City of Milton.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this? All those in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? Okay. Would anybody like a three to five minute accommodation?
Yes, very much so.
Alright, let's go. We'll take a, let's try to be back here by eight twenty-six session. And Paul is going to do the year in review and for those of us here, we have already read this. And recognize the stars that we have.
No team building.
Two thousand twenty-four year in review, uh, the City of Milton saw an increase of over fifty million in equalized value in two thousand twenty-four. That's a seven point six five increase from two thousand twenty-three. Overall equalized value has increased by four hundred and twenty million or fifty-nine percent since two thousand fifteen. This has kept our tax rate stable over the past ten years. Uh, twenty twenty-four accomplishments, the police department hired Officer Craig Quarter. I'm getting butchered names. I apologize to everyone. Uh, Officer Quarter completed the recruit academy and joined us in late December. Uh, Pierre Miller uh, resigned from the department to continue his law enforcement career at the town of Bloite. Officers Samantha Zabel and Angel- Angelica Harder. Uh, became certified field training officers to assist training new staff. All sworn person- personnel completed autism training to better engage with community members. And staff adjusted to the operation of ATV, UTVs in the city. This entailed additional training from the DNR to ensure staff knew the laws governing ATVs, UTVs to ensure safe operation in the city. Uh, community events that department engaged in included National Night Out, Shop with a Cop. Uh, compliments of the Walmart Community Grant Program. Drunk or Treat, which is a drug tri- takeback event. Backpacks and Books Club, Fourth of July Celebration Parade, Milton Christmas Parade, Homecoming Parade. Community Days, Coffee with a Cop, Snay and Stuff the Squad at the Piggly Wiggly. Uh, school initiatives included avoid, defend and, or excuse, excuse me, avoid, deny, defend. Training for all school district of Milton staff. Presentations at the Milton High School throughout the school, through the school resource officer. Uh, departmental upgrades, if I'm going too fast for anyone, please let me know.
You're not, but just make sure you breathe.
Department upgrades, uh, patrol rifles for all squads were upgraded to the same platform for ease of use. The department received a new automatic external defibrillator to align with those used by Lakeside Fire and EMS for efficient patient care. Uh, the apartment patch and uniform changeover began. The new patch will align with the city's logo and the uniform will now be black in color. The patrol fleet is transitioning to black squad cars with a new design implementing the new department patch and colors. In public works, seal coding.
I wanna interrupt. Thank you very much, chief, for putting this together and congratulations to your department.
You're welcome, thank you.
Public Works. Uh, there was seal coding on North Side Drive, Chicago Street, Second Lane, Fourth Lane, Putnam Parkway, Rainbow Drive, Hilltop Drive. Red Hawk Drive, Merchant Row Parking Lots and the Crossridge Park, uh, Crossridge Park Parking Lot. Uh, we replaced aerial lighting in the city hall and police department parking lot with energy efficient LEDs. Improvement to the Lamar Park Pavilion included new roof and roof and paint, sidewalk improvements. A new electrical and service and modifications to the bathrooms for ADA compliance. We re- relocated the skier board for the ball diamonds at Lamar Park to make it more visible from bleachers. Uh, we received a donation from Milton Storm for additional improvements to baseball diamonds at Lamar Park and Liberty Park. We entered into an advertising agreement with the Milton Storm. We replaced drinking fountains at South Goodrich Park and at Lamar Park Pavilion with ADA accessible fountains. And we straightened the light poles at South Good- Goodrich Park. Continuing, public works improved the uh, small diamond at Lamar Park. Completed a tree inventory partially funded by a DNR urban forestry grant. Cleanup and repairs to the Department of Public Works facility uh, after our tornado event uh, last May. Uh, processed one thousand four hundred and thirteen invoices for payment. Installed meters and set up sixty-five utility accounts. Mailed one, or eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty-six bills through mailing service. And uh, two hundred and, uh, two thousand three hundred and ninety-seven internally. Assisted families and funeral homes to perform fifteen burials, sold eighteen plots in the cemetery. Completed fuel rebate and received one thousand three hundred and four dollars and ninety-one cents. In the wastewater department, uh, completed sanitary sewer installation of a fif- fifteen inch sewer between State Highway fifty-nine. And East High Street in the public utility easement to facilitate current and fu- future growth. Replaced the Elm Street lift station that was recommended in the two thousand thirteen sanitary sewer capacity study. The project included adding workspace outside of the roadway, a backup generator for emergency power and other items for code compliance. Completed replacement of the aerial lighting at, at the wastewater treatment plant with energy efficient LEDs. Rebuilt the step screens at the wastewater treatment plant, performed sampling. Rebuilt the step screens at the wastewater treatment plant, performed sampling for local limit studies. And the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources issued our new WPDES permit. In the water department, completed installation of water mains between State Highway fifty-nine and East High Street. In a public utility easement, improving system hydraulics, completed the water main loop at the Crossword, Crossroads Industrial Park. Was, that was privately funded as part of a TIF development agreement. Completed initial water service inventory and submitted that to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. Entered into a maintenance agreement with USG Water Resources for long-term maintenance of the city's two water towers. Sent out more than eighteen hundred letters to notify customers that their service line was either lead, galvanized, or unknown material type. Rented out sixty-six outside water meters for customer use. Sold bulk water to eight customers totaling two hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred gallons. For eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. And then notified one hundred and seventy-one residents of possible water leaks within their home.
Congratulations and thank you. And I just want to thank Paul for reading this.
For our city's finance, the city's debt service ratio is currently sitting at twenty-six point three-two percent. We are constantly below fifty percent, which is where we want to be per our debt policy. Back in two thousand fourteen, that number was over eighty-two percent. So, we're continuing a strong fiscal management throughout the city. Elections last year, there were three of them in August, April, August, and November. Five thousand eight hundred and five total votes were cast in the City of Milton in two thousand twenty-four for all three elections. Three thousand five hundred and seventy-six election day votes, two thousand two hundred and twenty-nine were cast absentee. Nine hundred and six new voter registrations. The two thousand twenty-four elections in Milton were a great success, strong turnout, updated security, and a well-organized voting space. Special thanks to our hard-working electric workers. In collaboration with SISA, Public Works, and the Police Department. We improve traffic flow and ensures smooth, safe voting experience.
Thank you.
For the city, we administered twenty-six city payrolls and twenty-six gathering place payrolls. Processed seven thousand two hundred and thirty-eight cash, check, and credit card transactions at City Hall. And then processed then five thousand one hundred and sixty-nine credit card transactions. Department of Public Works processed an additional six hundred and eighty cash check transactions. And the city issued seven hundred and fifty-five checks and processed eight hundred and twelve ACH credit card transactions totaling ten point eight million. Mailed twelve thousand one hundred and eighty-nine utility bills, issued three hundred and twenty-eight pet licenses, and completed a hundred and sixty-two title searches.
Thank you, Kelsey.
In the library, in two thousand twenty-four, there was a total of eighty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-five library visits. Which was over two thousand more than two thousand twenty-three. Total circulation, including physical and digital items. Was one hundred and seven thousand two hundred and fifty-six, an increase from two thousand twenty-three again. The library is seeing a decrease in physical circulation, but an increase in circulation through the digital offerings. I.e. Libby, Hoopla, Canopy. Library card holders collectively, collectively saved one million seven hundred and forty-six dollars. One, excuse me, one million seven hundred and forty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. By checking out physical items with their library card. Five hundred and eighty new library cards were issued. And there were a total of seven hundred and twenty-seven programs attended by over seventeen thousand people. Library had a lot of collaborations with the school district of Milton, monthly visits to the four K kindergarten classes. Monthly visits with the ME CAS students for Spark activities. Graphic Novel Book Club at the high school, hosted a district-wide art show, hosted a Harmony Consolidated Art Show. Halloween Story Walk, band choir students performed at the pre-parade party, and some library field trips. Other partnerships for programming and services included Project sixteen forty-nine, the Humane Society of Southern Wisconsin. Milton Youth Coalition, Milton Food Pantry, Milton Lions Club Gathering Place. Milton House Museum, Milton College Preservation Society, Ice Age Trail Alliance, UW Whitewater. Candu Industry, Good Works Brewing Company, and Charlotte's Coffee Stop. More collaborations with this. Excuse me. More collaborations with the school district of Milton include several visits a month to the elementary schools. Virtual visits for Northside, hosted a district-wide art show and art shows for Harmonians Consolidated. Received a grant from the American Library Association to host a book club with ME CAS. Monthly activities with ME CAS, twice monthly graphic novel book club at the high school. And they raised chickens at the Spark with agricultural business students, which Jenny particularly enjoyed. Story Gardens continue to thrive and added its official ribbon-cutting ceremony. Programs in the space included food truck rallies, solar eclipse party, the Turkey Trot, an original play written by Jim Like and more. Ice Age Trail kiosk was installed, featuring a mural created by a local artist, Wendy Rameldhoff Ramos. Not bad. The library also had its first arc walk in Story Gardens with eighteen butterflies on display that were created by local artists. The butterflies were auctioned off and the library raised over ten thousand dollars for continued development and maintenance of Story Gardens. The library received the Tourism Council Awards from the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce.
And thank you.
Milton Youth Coalition held several community events. They held two sessions of strengthening families that reached thirty-seven different families. A youth night with Milton High School baseball game, Chambers Easter egg scramble. Escape the Vate program at Milton Middle School, drug trend presentations at Hope Lutheran Church, the chapel. Professional development with SDM, the Drugs Gone Bad presentations at the gathering place. Pre-parade party with the Milton Public Library. The Coalition co-sponsored a truck or treat and drug take-back with ten pounds of medications collected. They held a special screening of the film Screenagers Under the Influence. Milton's Middle School and Milton High School's youth-led Substance Prevention Society, SPS Groups. Provided alternative activities for their peers, the community. They focused on youth substance misuse and mental health with average attendance of fifty students between the two groups. Some of their events included movie night, co-hosted Winter Formal for MHS students. Pre-prom photo event with photo backdrops and professional photographers, mental health night for MMS and MHS youth. They could make slime, paint, decorate cookies in color, then a teacher appreciation recognition at Milton High School and Milton Middle School.
And thank you, Milton Youth Coalition. Please tell Maggie, thank you.
In economic development, seven new development agreements. That was up from five in two thousand twenty-three. Four of them residential, three of them commercial, thirteen new business startups, and then major residential growth in the past year. We've seen a four point eight-two percent increase in the housing stock in Milton just in two thousand twenty-four. That includes twenty-two single-family homes, fourteen units added in two-unit structures. And seventy-six units added in three or more unit structures. Fire and rescue.
Good job, Paul.
Five hundred and, that's not me alone, that's the staff working together.
Well, everybody gets a little sore.
Fire and rescue, there was five hundred and ninety-five calls for service. Average response time in the city is five minutes and twenty-eight seconds. Increased staffing, increased coordination within the region. Working towards three new stations, updating one current station serving Lakeside Fire Protection District. And the continued cooperation of eleven municipalities. In the administration, we developed the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine strategic plan. The continuation of updating the zoning code and hosting the ATV workshop that developed in passage of the new ATV ordinance. And twenty twenty-five, we're going to have some challenges that we're excited to work on. Continuing to guide, manage, and plan residential growth, including workforce and affordable housing. Future funding for fire stations, continued Milton's long history of fiscal sustainability. While encountering rising costs, unfunded mandates, and revenue volatility. We do have some opportunities too that we're going to be working on, that's going to be updating the city's comprehensive plan. And updating the city's comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, and then moving forward, beginning to implement the city's new strategic plan. Like to thank all the staff for their help preparing that.
Good job, good job. All right. Discussion and action regarding special events. Do you want me to take this? So, we had talked at different times, last year and this year at council. To review our special events process. And the special event permit application. Because there's been, there's been some challenges with permitting, there's been violations of permits. There's been events that have been held without permits. And right now, we have a. We don't really have an ordinance that has a schedule of fines if you violate the permitting process. And please jump in if I'm saying this wrong. So, the only option we have to ensure. The safety of our residents and permit guidelines being followed is really if we, if we deny a permit. Or we stop an event in the middle of the event because they didn't have a permit. So, there's been discussion about reviewing this process. And having an ordinance with a fine schedule. So, if someone takes out a permit and they violate it, that, then they can be given essentially a ticket and pay a fine. And so, how I see this could work, if you think about. And we really don't have this issue, a big issue in Milton with this, but surrounding areas, sometimes you'll have. A bar that has alcohol violations or is issue with a lot of police contact and maybe they get fined. And there is like a continuum of consequences. And then like maybe, you know, the end. Consequences pulling their alcohol permit. So. It would be useful for staff to have other options besides denying a permit. And it, you received in a previous packet. Examples of how other municipalities approach the permit process. It would have been. Before the last meeting in that packet, and there were several examples. But we used to have permits come before the council. And the council decided to look at a new approach where permits would go before Mark, Jenny, and Chief. And sometimes it worked out really well and sometimes it didn't. And there was one policy that was included in your last packet. Where there were some limits set that if an event was going to have X number of people, the permit, this is just an example. What we, you could create. If there were so many people, then the permit would come before the council. There were options where all permits would come before the council. There's pros and cons to those approaches. So, that's why we wanted this back on the agenda. Council members wanted to talk about this, especially since, you know, we. We have some, some safety concerns around different events and, you know, we want to be consistent and Chief, if anybody wants to speak. Since we had that packet for the other meeting, I wanted to kind of.
I was looking through, and I didn't go back to the past packet, but I was looking at the packet that we're provided with this meeting. And I did have some notes that I made, and I don't know if appropriate to bring them now, but. I didn't find anywhere in here that it says, no person may hold a special event on public premises without obtaining a special event permit. And I couldn't find anything for each event. Instead of, in the packet, it said event dates or date, date or dates. And then I understand one of the problems was that they would just write all the dates and turn in one packet for an entire season. Then we ended up having one that they didn't write that in there, and we had an event where they didn't have a permit. I would personally like to see some language in there where it says that they will complete a packet for each event, this individual to each event. Not that they can put a date, a bunch of dates in one packet and say, here you go. That, in the second paragraph, it says, all equipment supplies must be removed within twenty-four hours of the event such as da-da-da. I, we don't have any mechanism in place if this is not accomplished. And I don't know if this has been a problem, but I think there should be some language that future special event permits may be affected for failure to comply with this.
Well, that would be where that ordinance would come in, is that if you didn't abide by the permit. And that would be an example of not abiding by the permit, maybe?
Yeah, if they're not taking down equipment. I know we had issues with the community house for rentals where people haven't cleared out property.
Then you could have a fine.
Is this the packet that they'll be given? Just an example of the packet that an individual that's wanting to do an event will be handed.
It, this whole process is about, do we, do we want to do this now? Do we want to create a, a committee to look at it?
I was gonna, can I interrupt for one second? Yeah, so, I actually have a lot of thoughts on this. Imagine that. I filled out many and I've been a part of many. And I, I wanted to recommend, can we create like a subcommittee or something? And create the ordinance so it matches the event permit packet. And change the wording and then present it to council in the future, like shortly.
That's an option. I do think that you should get an ordinance on the books if you want to get an ordinance on the book.
For a.
For violations of the permits. Because right now, you don't have any ordinance.
Well, I also want to add to the, to the ordinance, like on the event permit packet, we have a thirty day, you have thirty days. But I, am I wrong? I don't see it in the ordinance to fill out that packet. I could be wrong in not reading it. But I didn't see the thirty days.
No, I do not believe that that's in the ordinance. That's just a policy that has been in place for several years. That it's supposed to be submitted to the clerk in thirty days, at least thirty days in advance.
Is that something we want to put in the ordinance? Is that important or is it on the event?
At this point, are we looking at just doing committee? Are we going to do the committee work?
Yeah, so I, I don't want to move forward with all my comments if, if we go a different route here. I'm just asking.
I, I was, I was thinking, I guess, about the ordinance would just be generally encompassing if you violated the permit process. The permit. And then the permit process, creating a new permit or process would be separate from the ordinance. Am I, am I thinking about that wrong, Chief?
I think that makes sense. I don't know what Attorney Schrader has for insight to that. I think if you establish the event packet with the information in it. And if they violate the special event packet or the restrictions within it, then they would be subject to the forfeiture schedule.
You could direct staff to create that ordinance and then work on revising the. If you wanted to revise the permit itself.
Because that goes back to, do we, are we doing this in a subcommittee or individually? Are we all going to try to wing this and then come together?
Well, I don't, the ordinance you don't do. The ordinance the attorney does.
I'm talking about the packet.
But the packet.
Yeah, I would say that if you try to put everything into the ordinance, you're very much locked into that. The packet gives you a little bit of leeway, gives us a little bit of flexibility one way or another. Because say they violated by just a tiny little fraction, do we all of a sudden hit them with a full forfeiture and stuff? That should be something that should be.
Is discretion within the police department whether or not to issue an ordinance. Right, that's a discussion. Ordinance issuance is solely rests on police. It doesn't really, we don't have the, we don't have an authority to issue a ticket.
Correct. It's, it's, we take into account past issues, the severity of the issue at hand. There's other factors that go into it. It's not going to be everything black and white, but we do aim to keep it consistent across the board going forward.
I like the idea of forming a subcommittee to look into that as well as other items on that, just to.
I would think you would want to get an ordinance in place before the end of February, because people are going to start. Cuz people are gonna start asking for permits pretty soon here, and then you're you're gonna be stuck in the same situation even last year. Where there were permit violations, there were safety violations, there were events held without permits. And there was, there is essentially no way that we can hold anybody accountable for violating a permit right now.
I'm just not sure this requires an immediate response without actually looking into it a little bit more. That's my concern.
Um, I think creating an ordinance is separate from changing the permit process.
Are you saying creating or modifying?
Modifying, I guess.
The current one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
What are you referring to, Ryan, I mean, could you get copies of uh permits? From area communities uh to look at, to compare what you might, you pull out of those to use for?
We already did that, staff already did that, so staff already did all the research from surrounding communities and included it in your packet.
Okay.
That it wasn't in my, it wasn't in the packet, it was a separate email that I did send to council.
Okay.
Um, before that, before last uh meeting that we had.
Okay.
Um, those were ordinances and not permit applications, I only sent ordinances. I'd like some clarification from our attorney, if we could just have a blanket ordinance that refers to the packet and if there's any authority there.
I would like to look into that, I'm not gonna answer that right now, I wanna have some context and discuss it before that. I mean, to see to what extent you can incorporate that into the orders, that was, when I was listening to the discussion, that was my concern because. Uh, you know, if you get into court and you say, well, what does the ordinance say? It says, well, whatever they say in the packet, well. What, you know, that that can be problematic. So, I, that's, I, but I just need to. I just need to look, look into that more and talk with, you know, Brandon about that.
Just direct staff then to work with you to create a sample ordinance?
I assume that that would be appropriate too, yes, for me to work with Chief and with Paul about that, yeah.
And then. Um, the the other part that has been an ongoing question, which was addressed in some of those other sample ordinances. That was sent is staff costs. So, in some of those ordinances, it says upfront, like if there's gonna be X number of dollars spent in staff costs. Then, then the uh permit puller would have to pay those costs upfront. Or you could, you could have a limit of like, if the event is gonna cost more than two thousand dollars. Then the the costs are paid upfront for staff time or or contract is negotiated. Or there's a cost share, like a fifty fifty cost share agreement. If the city would spend more than like two thousand or twenty-five hundred dollars and you were given a list. Of all of the costs that the city already um undergoes for providing events. And the majority of them are under twenty-five hundred, so this would only be really major events. That that costs, you know, a significant amount, the majority of them, there wouldn't be any cost share. Especially if it was like a twenty-five hundred limit, I think every, um, all the smaller events were under twenty-five hundred. So, is that something that you would like to include? In the ordinances, like the similar sample ordinances that you were given showed?
I don't know how to answer that here right now, I think, like I said, we need, if we're going to, again, find if the sta- if the. Uh, staff wants to work with Mark on establishing the ordinance, I don't, guess I don't see an issue with forming a subcommittee at the exact same time. And working on the policy while the city is working with our attorney to develop the ordinance. Uh, I don't know why one has to be done ahead of the other one.
So, who do you wanna be on that committee and then do you wanna have it be done by the first meeting in March and then put um? A hold on issuing any permits for this year until this is completed?
Why?
Right now, we're continuing as we have been continuing over the years, so I'm not sure it's necessary to put a a whole and all. Uh, event permits for now, we're probably trying to figure out a solution for the future. And if we go through another year like we did last year, we're just basically status quo.
If we go through another year like last year, we had multiple violations and we had mo- we had events held without permits. That several hundred people attended.
And has that been a trend for the last few, say, five years, is that just one outlier a year?
No, no, it's been, I would say, the last three or four years consistently, we've had issues. So, there's safety issues that have been going on for three or four years that we're looking to address. And that's why.
And we're talking about three weeks, right, I mean.
Right.
I guess, I don't have an issue if it's three weeks to to establish a policy and have it reviewed and possibly voted on. I think if it goes beyond that, then, and holding up any issues of permits, if it's gonna go beyond that, then I would say, yeah, we need to move forward. But I don't, yes, I don't see an issue with waiting three weeks to issue any permits that are coming up.
Oh, make some motions then.
Just to note in general. When one applies for a permit, the the case law in general is that when one applies for a permit, that's the law that applies. To the granting of the permit, so if somebody applied, so say you held off on issuing permits for three weeks. They, but they apply tomorrow, it's gonna go under these, it'll be according to the ordinance as it's written now.
What we'd have is all, is potentially a home to consistent violators rushing to get permits in before. Well, we've already delayed this two weeks, right? At the request of council, and it wasn't my understanding that we were just gonna continue to delay it, it was so everybody could. And specifically, Charlotte, who had a lot to contribute to this conversation, so. Well, they have to give thirty days notice for a permit, and it doesn't come before council anymore. Those permits don't come before council anymore. Couldn't do that, right, if somebody. Yeah, we're working.
Uh, can can the, can the table over there use the wireless for the rest of the evening?
I am not surprised at the table that the attorney is sitting at, it's a problem. So, anyways, the question is, could we, can we um not issue? Permits for three weeks or not, what would we have to do? Put a moratorium on permits, I guess.
I don't know. You're gonna have a moratorium, then you would get, need to have a, I don't know, motion, a second and approve it by the council. For a period of time, I don't know if there's anything specifically authorizing it by statute. But for relatively brief period. Authority to address it, and you know, what, C-type situation. You've indicated it's a safety issue that's not being addressed, and so you want to provide for a time period in order to address it. So.
And then we'd have it back at the first council meeting in March for recommendations. And you'd have to vote on who you want to be on that committee tonight, and then they would have to set up their meetings and have their work product. Into Jenny the Friday before.
Wednesday.
The Wednesday before the following Tuesday. Not if you're committed to 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 working on it, I mean, cuz we, now we're into February. And we already delayed it two weeks, so. You already have the research, right, there isn't any research that needs to be done because the staff already did the research that you requested that they do. Unless there's additional research that you want them to do, which you should.
I guess if we need additional research, I would like to know, have a comp- compilation going back five years at least of the amount of times we've had violations. Or safety issues.
How many safety issues are needed?
I'm just kinda curious as to what, you know, why this came about now and not say before, it sounds like there's a lot of issues last year, I.
Well, because we've been trying to work with. Go back and work and work and work with people and then then event organize, organize. Organizations changed hands and then there were additional issues, so. We've been trying to work with them and there are issues that we're not, we have not been able to resolve for three years.
What I've been looking for is not necessarily the name of the entities or the event itself, just wanted to know a track, a, see a track record history of. Where we've, this has become a major problem from before, that's what I'm curious, curious about. Other thing I wanna bring up is the only part where I mentioned thirty days is actually that's how long you can have signs on public property for an event. I don't see anywhere else where it mentions thirty days of notice for applying for a special event permit in the packet.
Yeah, it's on.
Uh, yeah, it's in the policy.
It would be page, if it's a page three, uh, two, that is, signs are allowed on public property for a period of thirty days to raise awareness of nonprofit. Event or issue of general interest to be, to the general community.
Page five, it says, um. All, a complete application must be submitted no later than thirty days before your event on page five.
So, are you worried that you're not gonna get the event permit for Civil World Living History Days?
No.
Oh, okay, I was wondering if that you were thinking that you weren't gonna be able to get a permit requested in the timeframe. That you needed, okay, alright, cuz I wasn't seeing that as an issue.
No, it just, to me, it seems like we're trying to rush through this without taking, just thinking about it fully, that's the concern I guess I have. If we didn't have an explanation necessarily two weeks ago as to what this full topic was about, we got the ordinances sent and stuff like that. But I, um, it just seems to me like we're trying to rush through this.
Well, we wouldn't be more rushed if we would have addressed it two weeks ago.
Right, my bad, I apologize, I had a medical procedure.
So now, there, we're trying to get this done.
This is something we talked about last fall when we talked about, I mean, so we, you're the one who said you went to postpone it till January. It was a good recommendation to start looking at this process, um, and I would actually. I mean, I think we could talk about this all night long, there literally, the the end result is, is we're just literally trying to make events. Easier for staff, um, and more safety, that's how, that, for the community, and that's literally it, there's not. I don't think there's anybody has a personal agenda here, I just have done a lot of, put on a lot of events and been a part of a lot of events. So, I do have a lot of feedback because it's a complicated process and I wanna streamline it and I just see some hiccups, that's it. And there are safety concerns for the community, so I'm speaking on behalf of the community, that's it, that's that's my gist.
I personally, if we have identified that there are safety concerns and we can correct that through this process. Then we have an obligation to not go, how far back do they go, how many? We've identified safety concerns and at that point, the city has accepted a certain amount of responsibility, and if we continue to fail to act, we're still, we're again, accepting that responsibility in my opinion. And I guess, I don't want to delay on this, I would rather move forward with it, let's get a committee together instead of talking about it and trying. I hate when committees find reasons not to do something instead of to do something.
And I could give you an example of safety.
Is not working.
There was a road closure on the street where I live and have a business, I was turning, there was a road barricade. No, no, I had no notice that the street was closing, I was leaving my home and business. And could have hit pedestrians if I hadn't been careful, and there was no, because we didn't know. Cuz there, it was, the event process was not followed correctly, now that was, that was me and, I'm not gonna talk about my driving.
The the other issue was that parents couldn't pick up children from school. So. But we did try to follow what your recommendation is, that we all agreed was a really good recommendation, and we really. We don't wanna have issues with schoolchildren, like we, we just, we don't, so. Um, if if you, you know, how do you wanna volunteer for the committee, I guess, first of all, it sounds like you want a committee. So, you can make a motion to do a committee before we've just drawn names out of just.
So, I'm all for helping with the committee, I'm all for working on this packet, the ordinance, that's cool, if you all see, see fit there. I just don't see the point in pausing people pulling out special event permits while we do this, we're gonna do it quickly, so why we have to just.
Because then you're gonna, we don't have any events right now, so you're gonna have maybe one. We probably will have zero, but you might have one, you might have two, and then those events are completely opposite of every other event going on for twenty twenty-five.
So, and I have a question, if we issue a permit and then we create an ordinance and and with, with a uh, an ordinance fee schedule. And they violate that permit, but because, because there wasn't an ordinance in place when they drew the permit. They, they wouldn't be subject to those fines then?
Yeah, that's correct, it's, it's ex post facto law, so. You, you're governed by whatever the law was in effect at the time that you pulled the perm out. Again, I haven't been asked to research this, so I haven't, but I'm skeptical that there's no forfeiture. For violating the terms of the ordinance. There's a general forfeiture schedule at the chapter one, I think, of your ordinances that would apply to any violation of any ordinance. If there's no other forfeiture prescribed, so.
Yeah, I, we were under the impression there wasn't, so do we just go back to that then?
Yes, I think, you know, that that's what, you know, Brandon, I don't know if there's a. If the municipal court has established, you know, uh, forfeiture. Uh, sca- isn't that forfeiture schedule isn't the correct term, I'm blanking on it right now, we're past your nine o'clock timeline, so. That's why our mics move up.
I know.
So.
The issue, I believe, is in the ordinance, does not uh discuss safety issues. And therefore, we cannot find for safety issues.
Yeah, that, so yes, if it's, if there's something not in the ordinance, that's correct, you can't, it's not a violation then, right. But if you do violate the ordinance. Have a forfeiture is just, there's no bond schedule.
Bond schedule, that's the word.
That's the word.
In the interest.
Did you, did you wanna say something?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna echo what Mark said, I don't think there was any bond schedule taken into effect, which is what we had a lot of issues with of other past ordinances. So, this would be another example.
Okay, Ken.
In the interest of moving this along, I would move that we suspend the issue of ordinances. Our permits uh until three weeks' time when we come back. And in that time, uh, have the city staff work with our city attorney to finalize or at least come up with an ordinance that is usable. And in the meantime, develop a committee to put together a policy uh to be presented to the council at the next council meeting.
Just to get some clarification, when you say three weeks' time, that's uh February twenty-fifth and not a council meeting.
I should say, then the next council meeting.
Or do you want it to be the first council meeting in March, how many weeks of that?
Okay, first council meeting in March, first council meeting in March, I'll amend that to the first council meeting in March.
First council meeting would be the fourth, but.
First council meeting would be the fourth, but if you're suspending, wouldn't you wanna make the fifth the date? So that you act on the fourth and then there's something available on the fifth.
Okay, is that your motion? Second, is there's a motion and a second further comment or question?
Um with that, what if somebody wanted to have an event in March? What I'm getting at is, no, I don't have an event in March, but I'm saying if somebody has an event in March, they need thirty days' notice. And and stuff like that, I'm just wondering if, I'm just wondering if there's a a situation where we can. If we're suspending it, if somebody has an event that now will be less than thirty days from when we start doing permits again. Are we willing or is there a way we can go ahead and reduce that timeframe? To allow them to have their event.
So what what events have we had permits for in March, Jenny?
Uh, yes, I do not have any in two thousand twenty four that were in April at that time though for applications that were submitted. Um food truck rally, summer kickoff for the Milton Public Library, um bind divine fun run were um submitted in that timeframe. Um I.
In March or for March events or submitted in March?
Now for Marcher events, no, no, so um there were events that were uh later, but. Not March events, but were submitted in the March timeframe.
Does the Easter scramble fall under?
Uh Easter scramble is uh Silver Park, so that's private property.
So we have no history of events happening in March, so I don't know.
Just was trying to add an protection for somebody wanted to have an event that they're not, you know, out of that event right now without having. A forewarning, I guess, a chance to argue that, so.
They would get thirty, they would get four weeks' notice. So going back to two thousand twenty three, we did not have any March application or March events.
I just wanted to cover that too, um and then should have had something else too. Uh as far as the policy goes, you're talking about revamping the policy we currently have or creating a different policy?
Taking this and working this policy.
Okay, and looking at the whole policy.
Looking at the entire policy.
Okay, good.
So there's a motion and a second to direct staff to work with our attorney to create an ordinance. Um and then have a co- create a committee to review the policy at the same time.
And to suspend the issuance of permits until the fifth.
Of March two thousand twenty five.
Of March two twenty five.
Okay, that's the motion, there is a second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, we're done with that. Discussion and possible action regarding the nonprofit contribution policy. I think this was um Ryan's request.
I don't remember, he said it was actually, I thought this was Charlotte's back in the day and I suggested pushing this one off to this time. That's what I remember back.
Common council members request that nonprofit contribution policy has been added to the agenda for review.
Guess the only thing I would, yeah, I guess I would say about it is we, you know, this year we kind of changed uh. Reduced how much time they could present and stuff like that, so I'm wondering if it would be worthwhile to just go ahead and either A eliminate the presentation. Or B, I think we need to set a timeframe for that presentation and I think it should be ten or fifteen minutes rather than five, give them an ample chance to present. That's the only change that I could think of on this one.
And um I don't think that was a timing in, I think that was just me.
That was, yeah, that was directed here within like a couple weeks before, so.
Not actually in the policy and you're at wondering if we should put that in the policy or just request one.
If we want a presentation, then we should give an ample time for presentation rather than cutting it short. That's if we want a presentation, the other alternative is to eliminate the presentation portion in that po- in the nonprofit policy.
And also in that policy was they're supposed to do a presentation and or is it just give information in June?
I believe it was just information.
It says they're supposed to provide an update to the city council on the progress toward achieving their stated goals and objectives. With city funding during a regular common council meeting in June.
Which is the part I believe you wanted to bring up with this topic at one point. But I think that could be like a simple report, writ- you know, written report rather than an actual presentation, but. It doesn't specify, it just says report back, so, but I was, I figured I'd bring up the presentations, we kinda cut it short on them this time and. Some of them do some of their prep in well in advance, so I thought it might make sense to either A. If we're gonna, if we wanna keep with presentations, give them an ample time, ten fifteen minutes, or B, scratch the whole presentation.
Or, go ahead, Ken.
Thank you. One, I say we keep the presentation, if we wanna make it ten or fifteen minutes, fine, uh but keep it. Also, I was looking at this under eligibility parent A subparent two. Must primarily serve City of Milton community members. These funds are coming from residents of the City of Milton. I think it should not be primarily, it should must. Serve the City of Milton community members, not primarily, and how do we ensure that these funds are being spent in Milton only?
So, I mean. I don't know that we can say you can only spend them. Like I don't know how we would track who's coming to events, do you know what I'm saying?
But that's not what I'm talking about, who's coming to the event, but the event, but also we're giving, when we look at. Only or those, only those organizations that meet the following criteria are eligible to apply to receive contributions to the City of Milton. Must primarily serve the C- City of Milton community members? Or I think since the money is coming from City of Milton taxpayers, why why is it primarily?
Well, but what about, what about Milton House, for example? Um, you know, a lot of people come to the Milton House um are not from the City of Milton. Part of why we're doing it for Milton is for the Milton House. Is that we think there's a great benefit to bringing tourists in who are gonna spend their money at Cafe Twenty Six. Or at Charlotte's, um so. You know, I I I I think that's limiting more than we'd want to.
Could it be just narrowed to an event that takes place in the city limits?
This money isn't spent entirely for events though, this is not uh just events, actually the Milton House doesn't use it for events, it uses it for um operational stuff. The Gathering Place, I think, uses it uh from a right for is for some events, but I think they also use it for some operational as well.
But they're in, they're in the City of Milton, I guess.
They are located in the City of Milton.
Is my argument, yeah.
That's my point, is these, we know that this the Milton House. Is in the City of Milton and those tax dollars are going to an organization that is in the City of Milton. And that serves this city, it's not like this or like the Milton House says, well, I'm gonna pick up the Milton House and go somewhere else and serve. It you have to come to the City of Milton, this gathering place is in the City of Milton.
So I think the idea is we don't wanna be donating to organizations that are then taking these funds. To support events that they're doing outside of the City of Milton, is that the gist?
Correct.
Does that make sense? That we want the the dollars that that tax pay, tax pay, tax levy dollars. To be restricted to be spent in the City of Milton.
When we first formed this policy and I was on the committee that worked on putting together this policy, I believe we had the uh that wording in there so that it wasn't. Too black and white to cut out certain uh to cut out things, because yes, while one could look at it as being Milton Houses inside the city for using the Milton House as an example. They do draw people from, a lot of people from outside the city and they're, say they put it on their summer staff, their summer staff are giving tours to people that are from outside the city. So that, you know, one, the different ways you look at it, I think we intentionally put primarily in there just to give us a little bit of a. A gray area that we can control, not not necessarily control, but a gray area that we could then use as emphasize and and. Use as a basis for our judgment on whether we give funds or not.
But all of these organizations that we give funds to from the city are designed to bring people into the city, so I don't know that that. Paragraph or that li- that line item uh addresses that, I I think it's, yes. We're looking at, what I'm looking at is, are those funds that we give to someone that comes from the taxpayers in the City of Milton. Being spent solely in the City of Milton as opposed to in another community, yes, we're drawing from other communities, we want them to come from other communities. To something in Milton and not having those dollars go migrating to another community with an organization that may be not as stationary.
We do ask them though how they're spending the funds. Right, so if they indicated they were spending the funds in another way, I think that would be the red flag, right?
I was, they used to in the presentations, we had them longer, actually it described what they spent them on and they ended up usually giving us a a breakdown of the previous year.
That's in the request paperwork now, right?
I think so, but I know that the presentation.
That we request them to identify?
Yeah, and and connect it to the um city uh strategic plan.
So Mike, here's an example for you to think about. And they don't request money from us anymore, but the YMCA used to request money from us and they have two locations. And the reason that the Y, we ended up declining to um use tax levy. To support the Y is because they refused to provide documentation that we asked for. To demonstrate how those, that money was being invested and what the outcomes were. So that's an example of an organization that we could request funds where we wouldn't know. It that theoretically could be spent at the Y in Janesville, I guess.
And I'll say this this policy is written before, while at the time when the Y was one of those that we were giving stuff to. Cause we put you this together, I think, what, eight, ten years ago?
Yeah. So that's only. I mean, you could have an organization that's a nonprofit that has multiple sites that requests my que- community action, right? They could request money from us and they have sites in Edgerton and Janesville and Beloit, so if you're looking for wording, if it has to be a specific. Event in the City of Milton, that's the only way you could really keep them from taking the money and going and spending it in another city, I guess. What do you wanna do with the policy?
Well, I I wanted to um s- uh kinda bring up the fact. I had two thoughts, um is there a way? To cap how much or put a minimum of how much the city, the cost of the city is. For the events and or from the nonprofit, so um the Excel sheet that Paul sent to us. There's a huge difference in all three nonprofits. And I didn't know if that was something that we would want, if we wanted to discuss. Um in their request, do we acknowledge, okay, they're requesting this amount, but this is how much the previous events have cost the city? Um and do we tie that together? And or in the policy, put a minimum of amount, like what I need, I think you brought it up for the event policy.
For the event permit, if the it was costing like over a certain amount of money.
So would that then go with the nonprofit, so then we wouldn't need to talk about it here?
Well, it could be in the permit.
I'm not sure those should be tied together, I I mean. Use the Milton House as an example, uh the Civil War Living History Days, so. The funds that were put on for that, the city, I guess, puts for putting up the barricades and picking up the barricades. Uh we basically tear them down, or the Milton House tears down and I help with that. Um that one there, I mean, that's same as if any other organization wanted to have an event and stuff like that. That shouldn't affect, I think, the nonprofit contributions, cause that's a completely different part of what we're doing here. So I don't think.
Why?
The event should be, you know, especially if that funding is not going towards events, that. Basically saying, well, using again as Milton House for example, we give the Milton House, say one year five thousand dollars, but then we take back fourteen hundred of it because of.
I didn't, I said a minimum.
A key, or we take into account that when we give them money for as a nonprofit saying, oh, well, we get, you know. Put in fourteen hundred dollars, that comes out of the five thousand we're.
That's not what I'm saying.
Just using that as potentially exam- way that could go in his example.
Did you look at, so I, so there's thirteen thousand going to open doors and fifteen hundred going to Milton House Museum of City Resources. That's a drastic difference. What I'm asking is, do, are we okay with that, or are we gonna? Is there a minimum or a cap that we put on it? That's all I'm asking.
I think that is something that would be addressed in the permit ordinance.
Correct.
Where we talked about, like, could there be, like, the city wouldn't charge for anything that. Under twenty five hundred dollars, but if the event costs taxpayers more than twenty five hundred in staff time. That we would do a cost share agreement, so I think that would be in the permit process.
Yeah, I I I think we've got a mixed bag here. Now, we've got the Gathering House and and the Milton House Museum that are one kind of organization. And open doors is basically an event organization and that's what makes it different. Uh you know, I think an event that that the Civil War thing or the concerts that the Gathering Place. Uh puts on are events, so those organizations do events. But open doors essentially is events, you know, that's that's what it's about. I I I think we treat the event stuff through the permit process.
Okay.
And we deal with the nonprofits in terms of this is a good thing that they're doing and we get. Ten thousand dollars worth of value to the city from it. Um, you know, in a lot of ways, I mean, the ten thousand dollars for. Couple of these organizations, I, it's a very, very small portion of 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 what they do, I. I think Gathering Place used to come and say, we we keep some of our lights on. Um, you know, that 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 was kind of what they're about. And so it really is that operational kind of stuff for um two of them.
And something I pointed out many years ago, um I think before most of you were on council actually, uh was that um. Those entities, especially the ones using it for operating, it's hard to get grants, there are almost no grants for operating expenses, there are plenty of grants for events. And stuff like that, that's something that's achievable, one of the benefits to this program is the fact that we're helping out in an area that's, you can't get aid in. Getting, it's it's almost impossible to get aid in uh helping with operating expenses.
Right, and there's nothing that would prohibit, i- you know, if. I don't know, if all of a sudden, you know, the Milton House or Gathering Place, you know, we were spending ten or twenty thousand dollars on staff time for their events. And then separately, we were donating ten thousand dollars and we're doing a cost share for our our event outlay. There there, there's nothing that stops either of those entities was from saying like, okay, you're giving us, you know, twenty thousand dollars. And we're gonna give you, you know, ten thousand back as a cost share, you know, like they can essentially do whatever they want with that money, so. So back to the nonprofit policy and the presentations.
Do we need a motion, can we do a motion on this or just discussion? Discussion?
Impossible.
I guess I. The area I would guess, I I guess the one area I'd wanna look at, as I said, is back to the presentations, if it sounds like wanna keep presentations. It might not hurt to put a time limit on there or put a time factor on there, not to exceed, say, ten minutes, not to exceed fifteen minutes. But that gives an ample time rather than trying to cut it to be short.
Do you wanna make a motion to direct staff to include, you know, a ten minute time limit in presentations in the policy?
Then it's always a standard, rather than trying to change it on the flyer beforehand and it puts a standard to it. I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to direct staff to include a ten minute presentation time limit in the nonprofit policy. All those in favor say aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, good job, good job, good job, okay. All right, possible discussion, possible action, authorizing the city to pay for two weeks payroll for the Milton Youth Coalition. If grant funding is discontinued from the federal government.
The federal policy and grant funding showed how sudden the funding for Milton Youth Coalition employee can end. Uh this would allow for the Milton Youth Coalition time to restructure if grant funding would suddenly end. Um during the positive federal funding in the last week of January, there are questions on how to handle the employment of the project coordinator. Of the Milton Youth Coalition, a federally funded position. Uh the project coordinator is an employee of the city, is funded through the Center of Disease Control Grant. Uh providing for two weeks' pay for the project coordinator in the event of the pause or discontinuation of. Excuse me, federal funding will allow for a better transition for the coalition, the the children that the coalition serves and for the project coordinator. Uh funding for the project coordinator, if the CDC grant suddenly ends, would cost the city approximately thirty two hundred dollars. Uh these funds would be reserved from the twenty twenty four residual funds.
Any questions or comments on that?
I would move that we authorize the city to pay for two weeks' payroll for the Milton Youth Coalition. If grant funding is uh discontinued.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, anything else for anyone? All those in favor say aye? Anyone opposed? All right, discussion and possible action regarding appointment of city representatives. Anyone opposed? All right, discussion and possible action regarding appointment of city representative to the Gathering Place Board. Um, the gathering, the, there's been a longstanding, um, position. That, um, acts as a communication liaison between, um, the city and the Gathering Place. It has for the, for many, many, many years not been a actual, elected official in city council. Right now it is and it's Teresa, and the appointment is a, a twelve month, like January first to December thirty first appointment on their board. Um, and so Teresa's not running for reelection and what we're asking is to have some continuity. Um, and have Teresa's appointment to be, um, in that position. Go through the end of December thirty first instead of the end of her council term. So, that's what we're asking about.
I'll make that motion, I'll second.
Good job, all those in favor say aye? And you wanna oppose? All right, um, does anybody want to discuss committee reports? Okay, does anybody want to have, is there staff reports that you believe? Not that they're not all important, but is there a message you would like the council and the public to hear at this time? No? Um, is there a motion to, um. Just pat ourselves on the back for the great teamwork we did tonight and not do the team building exercise? Is that a motion? And a second, uh, is that unanimous consent? I just wanna thank you all, I wanna thank the, the patience of staff, Lisa, I'm sorry you missed team building, come back, we'll have it again. Um, our next meeting date is February nineteenth and that is a Wednesday because the Tuesday before that is a primary election.
Right. Do we need us, do we need to assign the special committee for the event permit?
Um, if people wanna be on that committee, will you just, it's an, it'll be an ad hoc committee, send me your name.
Perfect.
And we'll, I'll, I'll just have Jenny draw names, so, just send me an email by midnight tonight if you wanna be considered. Is, no.
So moved.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn, say it.
Is that, all those in favor? All right, opposed? We're adjourned, good job, good job.